Okay, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Dan Gorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Cerullo, Dweck, Gold, Goodrich, Kermani, Maureen Anzum, Osorio, and Rampershead. Welcome to all of you and thank you. Hope everybody had a relaxing Fourth of July holiday. Before discussing today's agenda, I just want to take a moment to mention some news of the work of the Department of City Planning. First off, thanks to those who attended our Long Island City Neighborhood Plan Town Hall meeting in late June. We had a really good turnout of over 200 New Yorkers who met to learn our draft zoning proposal to spur the creation of 14,000 homes, at least 4,000 of them income restricted, expand commercial space, and enhance waterfront access and the public realm in this Queens community. Thanks to Councilmember Julie Wan for her leadership and WXY Studios for facilitating. There's a long road ahead here, but we are well on our way and look forward to continuing to collaborate with the community on this important work. In case you missed it, the Department of City Planning also released a new update to our population fact-finder. Thanks to the addition of detailed demographic information from the 2020 census and the 2018 to 2022 American Community Survey estimates, New Yorkers can now view wide-ranging data about our city's diverse population. It's another great example of how we are celebrating the melting pot that is New York. And finally, while it is still an ongoing process, I'd like to note a significant milestone for City of Yes for Housing Opportunity ahead of this Wednesday's hearing. Our dedicated and powerhouse City Planning team have now attended over 175 community board meetings on this proposal in the last two months. That is a remarkable achievement from our staff, who have worked tirelessly to go through this proposal, answer questions, take feedback, and much more. I'd like to express my deep appreciation to the New Yorkers who have engaged with this important proposal, and of course, to everyone at City Planning who has attended or worked on these public meetings. Thank you, thank you to all of you, and you're going to hear from some of them today. We're going to begin our agenda with a commercial overlay for 1025 150th Street in Whitestone, Queens. This mapping action will bring the existing Gleason Funeral Home and its parking lot into conformance with zoning and facilitate a new 22 space accessory parking lot. Moving to Manhattan, our next project also has to do with an existing commercial tenant. At 2360 Broadway on the Upper West Side, the mixed-use building is looking to expand the street wall width of a vacant ground-floor commercial space to allow a bank to tenant there. This building may look familiar to any TV watchers. It's also known as the Arconia on Only Murders in the Building. Also in Manhattan, we will review whether a transit easement is needed at 2289 to 2291, Third Avenue. From there, we'll head to 184 Washington Avenue in Washington Heights for an application to facilitate the construction of a new cancer care center at New York Presbyterian's Washington Heights campus. An existing landscaped open area would be relocated and redesigned around the proposed building. We'll also have a pre-hearing presentation on City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, which will have, as I noted before, a public hearing on Wednesday. I encourage any New Yorkers who care about the future of housing in New York City to participate in Wednesday's hearing. With that, Sarah, let's get started and get into the agenda for today.
Good afternoon and welcome to City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, July 8, 2024. The time is 1:05 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of zoning map amendment in Queens Community District 7. Our presenter is Joy Chen.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. This is a private application by Martin Gleason Funeral Home LLC, a more than 100-year-old family-owned and operated funeral home located in Whitestone, Queens. The action requested is for zoning map change from an existing R2A zoning district to an R2AC2-2 zoning district to permit the conversion of Block 4515, Lot 6, in the project area to an accessory parking lot for the funeral home. The project area is located in the southeast corner of 150th Street and 11th Avenue in Whitestone, Queens. The existing Gleason Funeral Home site outlined in the red dashed lines is located on Block 4515, Lot 1, and is a pre-existing non-conforming use permitted by the BSA. In 1968, the BSA granted permission to enlarge the two-story building to a funeral home with accessory parking in the rear, since funeral homes are not permitted as of right in R2A zoning districts. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential, community facility, and light industrial uses, mostly low-density one- and two-family R2, R2A, and R32, R22 zoning districts surrounding the project area. And you can also see many churches and community facilities in the areas that range in height from one to three stories. This photo shows the Gleason Funeral Home as well as the vacant lot, Lot 6, on Block 4515, and the sidewalk along the east side of 150th Street facing southeast. The proposed mapping of this C22 commercial overlay in an existing R2A zoning district would facilitate the development of a second accessory parking lot for the funeral home on Lot 6. The proposed new parking lot would contain 22 new parking spaces for the funeral home, thus reducing the need for off-street parking within the surrounding area during funeral services. This slide illustrates the existing parking uses on Block 4515, Lots 1, Lot 52, as well as Lot 6. Lots 1 and 52 are currently located behind the funeral home, and they were allowed per BSA approval, which expires in 2038. Lot 1 has 16 parking spaces, and Lot 52 currently has 29 parking spaces. Lot 6 is currently vacant but is proposed to be developed into a 22 accessory parking lot under the proposed actions. This slide illustrates the proposed 22 new parking spaces on Lot 6, which when added to the existing parking on Lots 1 and 52, would equal a combined total of 64 parking spaces in the project area for the funeral home. The proposed action of a zoning map amendment of a C22 commercial overlay is needed because the existing R2A zoning district permits only single-family detached homes with a maximum FAR of .5, and funeral homes are not permitted as of right. Under the proposed C22 commercial overlay district, a funeral home would be allowed as of right, as well as a slightly wider range of commercial uses. When commercial overlays are mapped in R1 through R5 zoning districts, the maximum commercial FAR is 1. In summary, the zoning map amendment to rezone the project area, Block 4515, Lots 1, 6, and 52, from an R2A zoning district to an R2AC22 zoning district, would bring existing commercial and accessory parking uses on Block 4515, Lots 1 and Lot 5 into conformance, while facilitating the development of 22 additional new accessory parking spaces for the funeral home on Lot 6. Thank you very much. I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you on this one. Okay, looks like we're good to go. This item is now certified. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the next item, Sarah.
The second item on our agenda is a non-Ula referral of an authorization in Manhattan Community District 7. Our presenter is Chelsea Evans.
Hello, Chelsea.
Good afternoon. This is an application at 2360 Broadway. The applicant, Bel nord Retail LLC, is requesting a zoning authorization pursuant to ZR 132213 to allow a bank tenant to exceed the 25-foot maximum street wall width. The applicant is proposing a ground-floor bank use with 46 feet and 3 inches of linear frontage along Broadway within the special enhanced Commercial District 3 in the Upper West Side, Manhattan Community District 7. Here you can see an aerial view of the development site with north at the top. The development site outlined in red occupies an entire block bounded by Amsterdam Avenue, West 86th Street, Broadway, and West 87th Street. The stretch of Broadway immediately adjacent to the development site has historically been and remains a significant commercial corridor. Large residential buildings with ground-floor retail tend to be located along the avenues. Mid-block areas within 600 feet of the project area are predominantly multifamily walk-up buildings and residential elevator buildings. The map on this slide is showing the surrounding area with north at the top. The development site is outlined in red. The zoning in the area consists of R10, R10AC15, C46A, C19, R8, and R8B zoning districts. This is a high-density mixed commercial and residential area that allows a variety of uses as of right. Special Enhanced Commercial Districts 2 and 3 are mapped to a depth of 100 feet along Amsterdam and Broadway throughout the surrounding area. The Special Enhanced Commercial Districts control use and transparency for the commercial establishments along the avenues in the Upper West Side. And here's one more view of the project area. Development site outlined in red is an existing 12-story residential building known as the Bel nord Apartments with a ground-floor commercial space. The Bel nord was built in 1909 and was individually landmarked in 1966 for its special architectural details. The ground-floor retail space located at the southwestern corner of the Bel nord Apartments is a subject of this application and has been vacant since 2012. The commercial space is located within the Special Enhanced Commercial District 3, or EC3. EC3 was established in 2012 and is mapped along Broadway from West 72nd Street to West 110th Street. You can see the extent of the special district outlined in blue on the map to the right. The special district seeks to enhance the vitality of well-established commercial districts by limiting the ground-floor presence of inactive street wall frontages. Within EC3, the maximum street wall width of a bank or loan office on the ground floor may not exceed 25 feet. Here you can see area photographs showing two views of the development site. The photo on the left is a view of the development site looking east from the intersection of Broadway and West 86th Street. The currently vacant commercial space that is the subject of this application can be seen on the ground-floor corner. The photo on the right is a view of the sidewalk along the east side of Broadway, and the development site is to the right. The applicant is requesting a zoning authorization pursuant to ZR 132213 to allow a bank with a street frontage of 46 feet and 3 inches to locate along Broadway. The bank has a total of 4,639 square feet of floor area, and we use the existing means of ingress and egress along Broadway. Currently, only 25 feet of street frontage is permitted for a bank along Broadway per Section 13221 of the zoning resolution. On the image to the right, the area shaded in gray is where the bank would be located with frontage on Broadway and West 86th Street. Pursuant to ZR 132213, the City Planning Commission may authorize a modification of the maximum street wall width of non-residential establishments within the Special Enhanced Commercial District if the applicant meets one of the following findings. The findings associated with the zoning authorization are A, that such additional frontages are required for the operation of the proposed use, and B, that a high ground-floor vacancy rate must exist within a reasonable distance of the proposed uses, and that such high vacancy rate is a consequence of adverse market conditions. The applicant is pursuing this zoning authorization pursuant to finding B. The terms reasonable distance and high vacancy rate are not defined in the zoning resolution, but at the time of the establishment of the special district, Community Board 7 recommended that 15% retail vacancy would satisfy this requirement. Within the Special Enhanced Commercial District 3 along all of Broadway, the vacancy rate is approximately 14.8%, and the department has previously stated that a healthy vacancy rate is between 5 and 10%. On the right, you can see a retail vacancy map that shows active and vacant retail frontages within the Special Enhanced Commercial District 3 and the Special Enhanced Commercial District 2 within 600 feet of the project area. The development site is outlined in red. The red stars indicate an active retail frontage, while the gray stars indicate that that retail frontage is vacant. Currently, 26% of the retail frontages within the surrounding Special Enhanced Commercial Districts 2 and 3 are vacant. In summary, the applicant, Bel nord Retail LLC, is requesting a zoning authorization pursuant to ZR 132213. The requested authorization would allow a bank tenant to occupy more than 25 feet of street frontage along Broadway, and the applicant has submitted a vacancy analysis to support finding B. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me start off, and then I'm going to go to the Vice Chairman. So, the enhanced commercial district here limits the street wall for retail to 25 feet, but allows for an escape hatch, if you will, if the certain conditions are met. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And in this situation, it would be, those conditions are either if an additional frontage is required, or there's a high ground-floor vacancy rate due to adverse market conditions within a reasonable distance, right? And the applicant here is relying on .2, as I understand it, right?
Yeah.
High vacancy rate, okay. So, we have, the community board had suggested 15% as a definition of high vacancy rate, and across this entire commercial district, we are at 14.8%?
Yeah, along Broadway.
And then within, but within 600 feet of this, we're at 26%?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. How, does the text define reasonable distance?
No, it's not defined in the zoning resolution.
Okay. So, but I suppose that by any measure here, it would be a boundary somewhere between 600 feet and the entire district, and 600 feet is 26%, and the entire district is 14.8%. So, it should pretty much meet the community board's standards. Okay, thank you. Let me go to the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just thinking, does this, I remember when EC3 was adopted, resulted from fierce advocacy on the part of elected officials there. So, is this, does this portend a rethinking of EC3, given the fact that, you know, commercial vacancies are pervasive throughout Manhattan, and as we can see here, with 26% within a reasonable distance? So, is this the beginning of a reassessment of EC3, you think?
Hi, Vice Chair. Andy Cantu, Manhattan Office. We think that because this authorization still exists, we should still look at exceptions on a case-by-case basis. When EC3 and EC2 were first adopted in 2012, there was this sense that developers, property owners, were assembling smaller spaces and consolidating them and looking for really large tenants, which certainly did happen back in 2012, 2013. With the Bel nord, the historic character is actually the opposite of that. When it was built in 1909, the ground-floor spaces of the Bel nord were actually very large, almost apartment store sizes. So, actually breaking the spaces up into smaller retail storefrontages is actually counter to the purpose of why the Bel nord was built in the first place, which was to accommodate these larger spaces. So, we think Manhattan Office feels like because of the historic context, because of the vacancy rate, it's appropriate to allow a larger storefront to locate here.
So, do you, but do you anticipate other requests for...
Relief.
Relief under this...
We don't think so. And this is something we didn't mention at the beginning of the presentation, but this is actually the first application we've received under this ZR section since it was adopted. And if applications were to come to us for relief in the future, we would obviously look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Commissioner Gold.
Sorry, I just wanted to pick that back up, because I guess essentially, it sounds like when this went into play, we were protecting the smaller stores, or smaller retail. And now we're at a point where certainly in that area, in many areas, we're having difficulty, whether it's large retail or small retail, basically we have, you know, a high level of vacancy. So, I guess just to understand a little bit better, we think it should be on a case-by-case basis, I get that, but just if you could talk a little bit more about the rationale, because again, it does seem like when one walks through the streetscapes that we have a lot of vacant retail, and at this point, as we look at the numbers, I guess the quick of it is I would say New York City is welcoming everything right now, right? We'd rather have full than empty, so, you know, why not basically make it a little more friendly?
Sure. So, before City of Yes for Economic Opportunity was adopted, there was actually an additional restriction on all retail frontages here. I think it was limited to 40 feet. We actually got rid of that provision under economic opportunity, but we think that we maintained the prohibition on banks and other financial institutions above 25 linear feet, because we felt that that specifically had a deadening effect on the pedestrian experience on these corridors. So, at that time, we struck a balance by sort of liberalizing the regime around retail generally, and allowing for additional flexibility for these spaces, while maintaining this prohibition or restriction that the community and the elected officials felt very strongly about.
So, just, I guess to take that one a step further, so this is 46. So, hypothetically speaking, the solution, you know, short of this, would be for them to carve it up, right? At the end of the day, they'd have to carve it up into something, and it's, you know, there's landmark issues with that, so that maybe is not so easy, so...
Exactly. Where the windows are actually located, it's not conducive to actually breaking up these storefronts into smaller spaces.
Right. So, I guess it being 46, though, it sounds like, again, it would be, it's not just a bank issue, it's an anything retail issue at this point.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich.
And the purpose behind the zoning, what is the actual goal or the purpose behind if there, the vacancy, having there be a vacancy rate if a commercial space fills this on the ground? I just, I don't understand it, so that's why I'm asking.
The purpose of the special district, you're asking?
Yes, like why would there need to be a vacancy rate if a commercial space fills the bottom? I don't understand the logic.
I think, I think the, if I understand, the district has a rule which says that you can't have more than 25 feet for retail. That's what the special district rules say, but in this situation, they want to do something that's bigger, it's 46 feet. And the only way to do something bigger is if you meet one of the two criteria, and in this case, the criteria that they're using is that the vacancies in the area are so high that they should have relief from the rule that says it can only be 25 feet.
Oh, I see. I read this wrong, I'm sorry.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I read it as, okay, I read this as like you can fill this space as long as the top floors are vacant.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Do you want to correct anything that I said here?
No, that was correct. I'll just add that it's specifically to discourage retail spaces with inactive street wall frontages.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Just a quick question. So, it sounds like, I mean, it's our analysis here is focusing on the regime affecting retail uses in general, but your, the description of the surrounding area notes that within EC3, there's a significant amount of banks already. So, I'm wondering if, whether EC3 itself, or whether there's anything that we could use here to guarantee a mix, a mix of retail uses? In other words, how many banks are enough, how many banks do we want to, are ideal according to the spirit of EC3? And do you use the opportunities for us to maybe fine-tune that?
Thanks for that comment. I don't know if Andy wants to add, but...
Thanks for that question, Commissioner. I don't think that, you know, the department would agree that it's necessarily in our best interest or our policy purview to be that prescriptive about sort of the density of a particular use in an area. I don't know if that's what you were suggesting, if there was like a particular density, then that triggered. I don't, I don't think that's a particular route that we would want to go to. I think that the, you know, the intent of the special district was really to, like Chelsea said, discourage these inactive street frontages. I know that the applicant, you know, this is intended to be a full-service bank branch with tellers, loan officers, lobby. They're looking at putting in like some sort of cafe area along the windows so that there is this active street frontage, and it doesn't have this deadening effect. But in terms of, you know, instituting some sort of additional rule in order to discourage banks specifically, I'm not sure that that's something we would, a path we'd want to go down.
Thank you. You've answered my question. Just to clarify, I'm not suggesting to discourage banks, but to guarantee a more, a mix, a more diverse mix of uses.
Right. I think, you know, philosophically, we, as a department... I think, you know, philosophically, we as a department absolutely want the broadest diversity of of uses here. Um, you know, unfortunately, that's not the economy that we live in and if we could have, you know, a bank versus nothing, we would choose a bank.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin.
Um, I'd just like to add a little context to this particular uh discussion, which is that the when this zoning change was proposed and this particular section was added, it was as a result of people on the West Side and in Harlem believing that there were too many drugstores opening and banks particularly. Gail Brewer fought very hard for this proposal because there was a feeling that everything that was opening was these two uses and it was crowding out any other kind of diversity. And that's after a lot of discussion, that in fact is why this proposal was adopted after the Harlem proposal on one hundred and twenty-fifth Street, which did the same thing. Um, I I think the department is probably correct that the vacancy rate that we have now was not anticipated when we did this. And an already existing building of this type was not something that we were looking at, just to add some.
Helpful, thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay, um, great. Well, with that, thank you, we're going to refer this one out to the community board for forty-five days. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item.
I think it's actually going to be thirty days, that was my mistake, sorry. Thirty days.
Sorry, say that again.
Uh, we're going to do a thirty day referral, apologies.
Thirty days.
Okay. Uh, the third item on our agenda is a non-U L A post-referral in Manhattan Community District eleven. This is a private application for a transit easement joint certification from the CPC and the MTA to the to determine if a transit easement volume is required. The MTA has determined that an easement would not be required at this site. Also, Manhattan Community Board eleven has submitted a recommendation stating no objections. Uh, both the letter from the MTA and the recommendation from the community board were included in your materials. Trevor Lovitz is here for questions, should there be any?
Okay, any questions about this? Question about whether transit easement was required? MTA says no, community board assents. Any questions here? Being none, I'm going to take a vote on this one. Uh, let's I would like a sent by voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the ayes have it, thank you.
Okay. The fourth item on our agenda is a non-U L A post-referral of an authorization and a modification of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District eleven. Our presenter is Audrey Watts.
Welcome.
Thanks. All right, hi, everyone. Today I'll be presenting an application by New York Presbyterian Hospital for a few changes to its Washington Heights campus located in Manhattan Community Board twelve. New York Presbyterian is seeking a CPC authorization for the location of a cancer care center within an existing large-scale community facility development and distribution of lot coverage within the large large scale without regard to zoning lot lines. It is also seeking a non-U L A modification of a special permit to update the site plan and zoning calculations of a previously approved large scale to facilitate the development of a five hundred fifteen thousand square foot nu- a cancer care center as well as the relocation of an existing landscape open area. The surrounding area is predominantly medium and high-density residential with some institutional and and commercial uses. Uh, I just want to note that the project area consists of parcel A and parcel B, um as well as a section of Fort Washington Avenue between West one hundred sixty-eighth Street and uh West one hundred sixty-fifth. Uh, the zoning uh for this area is R eight, um with some C six-two and C four-four districts along Broadway. And the surrounding area mostly consists of the hospital campus and associated buildings. And buildings on the in the project area include the College of Physicians and Surgeons, uh, the Morgan Stanley Children's Hospital, the Harkness Pavilion and adjacent landscaped open area, as well as the Eye Complex and Service Building Annex, which together comprise the construction site. This is a view northeast from Fort Washington Ave and West one hundred six sixty-fifth Street towards the Eye Complex and Service Building Annex and a view northwest of the same building. The view southeast on Fort Washington Ave to the north and west facades of the Eye Complex and a view southeast towards the tiered landscape open area on the east side of Fort Washington Avenue. This is a view south on Fort Washington Avenue of the existing landscape open area and a view north of the landscape open area adjacent to the Harkness Pavilion. As you can see, the area is fenced off and it is not its design is not particularly welcoming to the public. Now I'd like to zoom out for a minute to talk about the large-scale community facility development, uh, origins and background. The large scale was established in nineteen eighty-four to facilitate the development of a campus for New York Presbyterian Hospital. It allowed accessory loading berths to be located anywhere within the large scale without regard for zoning lot lines, a waiver of regulations, uh, governing heightened setbacks on the periphery of the large scale, and pedestrian bridges over the portion of Fort Washington Avenue within the large scale. In its approval of the nineteen eighty-four uh special permit, the CPC noted that the applicant's proposed authorizations and text changes were of quote, "prime importance for the hospital complex to operate in a functionally cohesive and efficient manner to continue to provide the healthcare the high-quality healthcare services for which it is world-renowned." The large scale has since been modified three times. And in addition to these approved modifications, there have been three unapproved changes to buildings within the large scale. All three of these changes slightly increased the floor area uh within the large scale but did not uh increase lot coverage. Now I'm going to zoom into the construction site for a moment, uh, before reviewing the proposed building. It is located on the southwest portion of parcel A at the corner of West one hundred sixty-fifth Street and Fort Washington Avenue, consists of the two-building Eye Complex and a service building annex, which would be demolished for the proposed project. The applicant's rationale for this demolition is that the Eye Complex has outlived its useful life, cannot be further modified or upgraded, and is no longer suitable for the needs of a modern medical facility. The proposed development uh would be around three hundred fifty feet tall, uh sixteen stories, uh, with a six-point-four uh community facility FAR. Um, the uh, the applicant's goal here is to consolidate uh cancer care uh facilities that are now dispersed throughout the hospital campus and consolidate them in one building to provide comprehensive care via diagnostic, surgical, and treatment facilities. Uh, the proposal would also relocate and enlarge by about twenty square feet an existing landscape open area. Here's a rendering of the landscape um viewed from the northeast from Fort Washington Avenue and one sixty-fifth. Amenities would include shade trees, planting benches, and crucially, no fence. So the large scale uh has a lot of moving parts, but the applicant is essentially asking for three items. To build the proposed development, the applicant would need to encroach on the sky exposure plane and it needs to transfer about twenty-seven hundred square feet of available lot coverage from parcel B to parcel A where the proposed development is located. The applicant also seeks a non-U L A modification of the existing large scale to modify the site plan and zoning calculations to reflect the proposed project, provide for that relocated la- landscape open area for public use, and facilitate the development of the proposed building. ZR twenty-four fifty-three requires a front open area of ten feet measured perpendicular from the front lot line, a maximum front wall height of eighty-five feet above the street line, and above the front wall height, a sky exposure plane of seven-point-six to one along wide streets. The applicant seeks a modification of this requirement for the proposed building to encroach into the sky exposure plane along Fort Washington Avenue, a wide street wholly within the large scale. ZR twenty-four eleven permits a maximum lot coverage of seventy-five percent in the corner lot portion and sixty-five percent in the interior through lot portion of a zoning lot. The proposed building would exceed the lot coverage permitted on parcel A. And as such, the applicant seeks to distribute lot coverage available on parcel B to parcel A. Um, that's about twenty-seven hundred square feet of lot coverage transfer. And the proposed building would increase parcel A lot coverage from sixty-five to sixty-six point four-three percent, but the total large-scale lot coverage would remain below the sixty-five point nine-eight lot coverage maximum. The proposed project would also update the site plan and zoning calculations to reflect minor changes to buildings within the project area that were made in two thousand nine, twenty-ten, and twenty-fourteen that were not reviewed by DCP or the CPC. In June, Manhattan Community Board twelve approved with conditions applicant zoning actions. Uh, it urged the applicant to make good faith efforts, to use local vendors, and to hire locally. The applicant is aware of this condition. And in summary, DCP believes that the approval of the actions would continue to meet the findings of the special permit and believes that the development would contribute to the Washington Heights neighborhood and the city by allowing New York Presbyterian Hospital to continue to conduct oncology research and provide cancer care. Thank you and happy to take your questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me just start off with one, it's just a technical one, and I think I just want you to go back to the slot about the lot coverage for a second. Um, so the the lot coverage regs say that you are capped at either seventy-five percent or sixty-five percent, depending on where you are on the lot. Is that right? Okay. And presumably in the part of the lot where for which they're seeking the authorization, that's the sixty-five percent portion?
Yes.
That's why they need the authorization to go up to sixty-six point four-three percent? Okay. So they're go they're they're the authorization allows them in that part of the lot to go from sixty-five to sixty-six point four-three?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Benjamin?
Sorry. I just had a couple of questions. The first is, in the new building, how much of that building is devoted to patient rooms? Is there an inpatient facility part of this? So.
Hold one second.
Let's pause.
Let us just pause for one moment to make sure that we don't have any
Side worst.
Online Zoom turbulence here in our hearing, so hold that hold that question and answer, and just give me one second.
That's fine. Um, you were gonna tell me how much, if any, is actually inpatient room?
Mm-hmm. So we have received from the applicant um drawings that depict what fours would be used for patient rooms, uh, but we don't have specific documents on the square footage that would be allotted and sort of the program of the building. So at this point, I couldn't find out for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
But at this point, I don't have specifics.
Okay, I'm I'm just really curious about the ratio between the inpatient rooms, the diagnostic and treatment rooms, and other research service. So I'd like to know the three categories and the square footage associated with each of them.
Sounds good, thank you.
And then my other questions concern the landscaped open space and the trees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as I read the drawings, there are only four new trees in the landscaped open space areas. Is that, am I reading that correctly, but they're removing thirty?
They are, let me get back to you on that. Um, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but essentially what they're doing, so the existing landscape open area was provided at the size that it was provided in the specifications, um, because it's the exact size of the bridges that were built at the cover for Washington Avenue, so it was, um, you know, in exchange for that open space. And I would need to check on how many trees are going to be in the final design.
Okay, and my question is occasion, because one of the things it does talk about is this landscaped open space and the fact that there was a there is a tree deficiency.
Mm-hmm.
And that the applicant is buying tree credits from DPR? And so I'm curious about, I I'm not aware of how that program operates or where those trees that are not going to be here would be placed.
Mm-hmm. Let me let me check on that.
Okay, and if you could ask them for a more detailed design of that landscaped, it looks like there's just a few circular benches in that kind of serpentine area on the corner of lot B, parcel B.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that it's a pretty narrow open space, which that is broken up on the avenue by the egress and ingress
Mm-hmm.
For vehicles, so I'm not sure how valuable this space is, is my question. So I'd like to see more of a design about what it is.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're going to schedule this one uh for a vote um at a later date, so thank you for the presentation and uh we will be following up shortly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah.
Okay. The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a citywide zoning text amendment. Our presenters are Winnie Chen and Veronica Brown.
Welcome back.
We're excited for you to hear about CVS for Housing Opportunity, a citywide text amendment that would change zoning to allow for equitable housing development. These changes would enable a little more housing in every neighborhood by removing barriers to housing growth. CVS for Housing Opportunity is a citywide plan that would encourage incremental housing growth over a wide geography. New York City faces severe housing shortage. The vacancy rate for rental apartments is historically low, only one-point-four percent, far below a healthy vacancy rate that provide New Yorkers with housing options. Because their housing demand is greater than our housing supply, New Yorkers are experiencing very high housing costs. Over half of New York City renters are rent burdened, meaning they spend over thirty percent of their monthly income on rent. Not having enough homes is also a direct cause of homelessness. On a given night in December twenty-twenty-three, there were ninety-two thousand eight hundred homeless New Yorkers, including thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty children, sleeping in this shelter system every night. Most of New York City's housing was created in the first half of the twentieth century. Since that time, housing production has fallen dramatically. That's in part because of zoning that has become increasingly restrictive since nineteen sixty-one. While housing production has decreased, demand for housing has increased. There are a number of reasons for this. For example, households are smaller today than they used to be, meaning even the same amount of people take up more space. What recent housing production has occurred has been limited to only a few neighborhoods. In twenty-twenty-three, ten community districts produce as much housing as the other forty-nine combined. When some neighborhoods stop producing housing, that puts additional pressure on the other neighborhoods to produce more and more new housing. The proposals in CVS for Housing Opportunity emerged from the goals outlined in Where We Live NYC, the city's fair housing plan. Where We Live NYC was created by Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, in collaboration with over two hundred and fifty community organizations. It highlights how the city's housing shortage and affordability crisis have severely limited New Yorkers' housing choices. In a tight housing market, landlords can charge high rents and existing tenants are vulnerable to tenant harassment, poor housing quality, and displacement pressure as they compete with each other for a limited number of homes. When there are few apartments to choose from, renters pay more. These conditions further worsen the neighborhood-based legacies of segregation, discrimination, and concentrated poverty that have led to the deeply unequal city we have today, where neighborhoods have unequal access to resources and opportunities. The average New York City household makes about seventy thousand dollars a year, but the average two-bedroom apartment in New York City costs over twenty-seven hundred. This means that your average working family will have to spend about half of their income on rent to get a home for their family. their family. New York City's dire housing shortage has direct human consequences. These have been underscored in our extended community engagement process. Over the past year, DCP has met with over 100 groups, including housing nonprofits, tenants' rights groups, faith-based organizations, and affordable housing providers. Each of these groups was able to share a unique and valuable perspective on the lived experiences resulting from our housing crisis. When New York City fails to produce housing, all New Yorkers feel the economic consequences. Wage gains just go to higher rents and businesses can't expand because workers can't afford housing. Allowing New York to build more housing can also help to create good quality jobs in construction and residential maintenance, adding an estimated $58.2 billion to the city's economy and creating over 260,000 jobs. Many city agencies work on policies and programs aimed to address New Yorkers' housing needs. The Department of City Planning is responsible for the city's zoning. Zoning regulates what can be built on a particular site, both how big the building can be and what uses it can have, residential or commercial, for example. Sometimes zoning includes other things, like requirements for income-restricted affordable housing, but zoning does not fund new housing or directly control what will be built. It only establishes rules for what may be built. How much housing gets built depends on many factors. Other tools the city uses to support good housing outcomes include subsidies or tax incentives to promote income-restricted affordable housing, programs for affordable homeownership, and tenant protections that guarantee New Yorkers' rights. Changing our zoning can respond to these housing issues by increasing the number and the types of homes available in every neighborhood across the city. If each neighborhood adds a little more housing, New York City can add a lot more housing overall without any single neighborhood experiencing dramatic changes or overwhelmed infrastructure. This text amendment is the biggest pro-housing change DCP has ever undertaken and would touch the zoning for every single part of the city. The Universal Affordability Preference, UAP, would allow for bigger buildings for affordable housing in every medium and high-density zone district. Across the city, the proposal would move residential parking mandates, which are making housing more expensive. The proposal also creates missing middle housing or low-rise apartment buildings in our low-density areas. The proposal also aims to help homeowners in our low-density neighborhoods by allowing them to add accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, to their homes and providing small buildings with additional flexibility to adapt over time. There are a range of smaller proposals, including enabling conversions of non-residential buildings, allowing more small and shared apartments, allowing for residential campuses at height-limited buildings. Exclusionary zoning rules have made it virtually impossible to build housing in many low-density neighborhoods, placing additional pressure on the high-density parts of the city to produce more housing. This wasn't always the case. Small apartment buildings and two- to three-family homes are common in New York City's lower-density neighborhoods, and they were allowed in many places until as recently as the 1990s and the early 2000s, when stricter zoning prevented them. C V S for Housing Opportunity would reintroduce modest buildings that are more naturally affordable than other forms of construction and apartment buildings at a scale in which they could take advantage of existing affordability programs. Together, these changes allow for the creation of more housing in the low-density areas without affecting neighborhood character. Our Town Center proposal aims to create more missing middle housing in low-density areas. Missing middle refers to a category of housing that's modest in scale and often affordable to middle-income residents, a once-common type of housing that's not often built in the city anymore. This proposal aims to re-legalize mixed-use apartments or buildings with ground-floor commercial use and a few stories of housing on top. This is a classic New York City building type that exists in many low-density commercial corridors, but overly complex zoning rules make it almost impossible to build new ones. This proposal streamlined zoning rules, including restrictive limits on floor area and height, so that it's once again feasible to build two to four stories of housing above a commercial ground floor. Our second proposal for missing middle housing is transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented development would allow for low-rise buildings, three to five stories, depending on the underlying zoning, on sites that are near transit and meet specific criteria. So first, the site must be on a block within 0.5 miles of a subway or rail station. Second, the lot must be over 5,000 square feet. And finally, the lot must be located on the short end of the block or on a wide street, which zoning defines as being over 75 feet wide. Community facilities, like faith-based organizations or libraries, could also use these rules throughout the city on sites over 5,000 square feet where the community facility space is present. Our transit-oriented development rules would promote missing middle housing while also promoting sustainability by adding housing in areas with good access to transit. In the rest of the low-density areas, the proposal aims to give homeowners more flexibility. Under this proposal, a single or two-family home would be allowed to add a small accessory dwelling unit or an ADU. There are a range of types of ADUs, including backyard cottages, garage conversions, and basement apartments. These small units could provide important housing options for small households, like a young person moving into their own place for the first time, or an elderly resident who wants to age in place. Because of their small size, they also serve different income levels than a large, single-family home. Successful ADU programs across the country can show us that these units can give multi-generational families a little more space and help middle-class homeowners manage their household expenses. Only a very small percentage of eligible lots in these locations choose to add an ADU, about 1% per year, but this incremental housing growth has big benefits for homeowners and for tenants. While the zoning text would make zoning changes needed to enable ADUs, other barriers, including rules in the Building Code, would need to be lifted to make ADUs a reality. The zoning text will prohibit ADUs in special coastal risk districts, which are the areas of our city with the most severe flood risk, and basement ADUs would not be allowed in the 100-year floodplain, consistent with other zoning rules. Complementary changes, which include changes to the Building Code, would require local legislation, including rules to address areas sensitive to stormwater or coastal flooding. Recommendations for these rules are being developed by an inter-agency working group that includes the Department of City Planning, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, New York City Emergency Management, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Fire Department, and the Department of Buildings. The city looks forward to working with the City Council to advance these measures. The same rule changes that enable ADUs would also help homeowners who may not want to add an ADU but just need some more flexibility to adapt or renovate their home to meet their family's needs. Our research shows us that many existing buildings are out of compliance, meaning they're not in line with today's zoning rules. For example, our 4-1 districts are two-family districts that allow semi-detached buildings, like you see here. But buildings like these pre-1961 duplexes couldn't be built today because they have more square footage than was currently allowed and their rear yards are too small. These non-compliances end up causing big headaches for homeowners if they need to borrow money from the bank or if they want to make simple changes to their home, like renovating an outdated kitchen. This proposal would fix these rules, which would have dual benefits. First, homeowners of existing buildings won't run into issues when they go to make an alteration to their building because the zoning would better match what's actually on the ground. Second, you would actually be able to build a two-family home in a two-family district or a multifamily home in a multifamily district, when today, the only thing that would be feasible is a single-family home. Next, we're going to turn our attention to the medium and high-density areas in New York City, where our focus is creating more opportunities for housing, including affordable housing. To do this, the proposal introduces the Universal Affordability Preference, or UAP. It will allow apartment buildings to be at least 20% bigger, so long as the extra space is occupied by permanently affordable or supportive housing. UAP is modeled after current rules that allow bigger buildings for affordable senior housing in some neighborhoods. UAP would allow for incremental housing growth in neighborhoods and encourage affordable housing throughout the city, rather than concentrating it in a few neighborhoods. This map shows which districts have existing senior housing preference today, shown in light orange. Through the UAP framework, all forms of affordable and supportive housing will be to take advantage of the higher FARs already provided to affordable senior housing in these districts. However, there are a few districts that don't have the senior housing preference today, shown in dark orange on the map. In these areas, the proposal would create new FARs to enable the growth of affordable and supportive housing in every neighborhood. The proposal will also make sure that zoning provides room to build the extra affordable housing required through Universal Affordability Preference, so be limited height increases where it is necessary to make enough room for these affordable homes. So what does affordability mean for UAP? UAP would have an affordability requirement of 60% area median income. Area median income, or AMI, is a measure of affordability established by the federal government. At 60% AMI, or about $76,000 for a family of three, UAP would serve lower-income New Yorkers than existing zoning tools, voluntary inclusionary housing. UAP would replace the voluntary inclusionary housing program, but mandatory inclusionary housing, which requires a percentage of new developments be income-restricted affordable housing, will continue to exist and be mapped when there are significant increases in residential density. UAP will also serve New Yorkers at even lower income levels through income averaging. Income averaging means that instead of only including homes at the required affordability level, a building can include homes at a range of incomes that average the required affordability. So, for example, a building can meet UAP's 60% AMI affordability level by including a mix of homes at 30% AMI, or about $38,000 for a family of three, 60% AMI, about $76,000 for a family of three, and 90% AMI, about $114,000 for a family of three. Through UAP's deeper affordability requirement and the introduction of income averaging, UAP can help to serve the low-income New Yorkers who most need affordable housing. Here's one example of how Universal Affordability Preference works. If a church located in our 6th district wants to build affordable housing today, they get 3.0 FAR, regardless of their developing market rate or affordable housing. This will allow them to build about 35 units. Under UAP, they get 3.9 FAR, but the additional 0.9 FAR can only be used for affordable housing. If it is, they can build about 10 to 12 more affordable units. 10 to 12 more affordable units may not sound like a lot, but this is functioning at a citywide scale. If every project has a few more affordable units, New York City can add a significant amount of affordable housing and no single neighborhood will experience dramatic changes. This is a rendering of how UAP would play out. Without UAP, the building is built according to the base FAR for market rate housing. The result is this eight-story apartment building. With UAP, the building can be about 20% bigger, which for this example translates to additional two stories, so long as the extra space is permanently affordable housing. UAP can make a big impact on our housing crisis. In our initial calculations, we found that had UAP been in place since 2014, with tax incentives and public subsidies fully in support, an additional 20,000 income-restricted affordable homes could have been created and house 50,000 New Yorkers. Mandatory inclusionary housing, MIH, areas will remain in place and continue to be mapped when there are significant increases in residential density. Because establishing MIH requires rezoning, it is only applicable in limited parts of the city. UAP would extend an inclusionary framework across all medium and high-density areas at once. This proposal would also introduce some improvements to MIH. First, under this proposal, MIH Option 3, previously known as the Deep Affordability Option, could be applied as a standalone option. Today, it has to be applied as an alternate with MIH Options 1 or 2. This will allow future actions to ensure deep affordability when MIH is applied. Some MIH FARs be raised to meet UAP'S FARs. For example, R6A currently has an MIH FAR of 3.6, which be raised to 3.9. The options would remain in place, meaning the same percentage of affordability will continue to be required. Finally, the current MIH program is incompatible with tools that facilitate affordable homeownership. This proposal would exempt 100% affordable homeownership projects from rules that prevent them from penciling out. C V S for Housing Opportunity also makes changes to zoning rules in order to re-legalize building designs with better access to light and air. Previous zoning changes had the effect of making courtyards and features like kitchen and bathroom windows infeasible, even if that was not the rule of intention. Under our current zoning, the only feasible building type is a bar building, a rectangular building like you see on the upper part of the slide. Yard requirements, court dimensions, and distance between building requirements for legal windows mean that you can no longer build a building with a court in the middle with windows looking out into it, as you can see in these floor plans. For tenants and homeowners, this translates into homes with only the legally required windows in bedrooms and living rooms along one side of the building and no windows, as you can see from these floor plans. The proposed changes to zoning would address these issues and support better quality housing in new buildings. These changes include adjusting the required rear yard from 30 feet to 20 feet, adjusting the court dimension, changing the distance required for a legal window from 30 feet to 20 feet, and slightly increasing the maximum lot coverage from 70% to 80%. Additionally, this flexibility and changes to corridor requirements would facilitate more family-sized units at the ends of corridors. The Sliver Law was created to provide height limits for a subset of narrow lots at a time before height limits were broadly available through zoning. Under the Sliver Law, if a site in a certain zoning district is less than 45 feet wide, it can only be 100 feet tall or as tall as the width of the street, whichever is less. Since this complicated rule was created, clear height limits have been incorporated through contextual envelopes, which are available as either a requirement or an option in every zoning district. This proposal would update the zoning to allow these sites to follow the height limit of the underlying zoning district. If sites in non-contextual districts do not use the contextual option, they would remain limited to the Sliver Law's rules about the maximum building height. All narrow sites would remain subject to height limits. This proposal would modernize our zoning while also creating new housing opportunities on duly constrained sites. Now, I'm going to present a series of proposals that apply citywide. So first, I'll present our parking proposal. This proposal would make parking optional for new housing everywhere, following the example of many other major cities. Today, New York City requires new housing to include off-street parking, even when it's not needed. These mandates mean less space for housing and increased construction costs, which results in less housing being built. The diagram on this slide represents that parking takes up a lot of space. Two parking spaces is roughly equivalent to the size of a studio apartment. Building parking is also expensive, and that's an obstacle to housing growth, especially affordable housing. This proposal prioritizes housing over parking. Parking would still be allowed, and we anticipate the developers would respond to market needs and continue to provide parking in areas where there's the demand. Removing parking mandates can help reduce the cost of housing construction and enable the development of more homes in each new building. This example shows how lifting parking mandates can support housing growth. A developer sees this underutilized lot in a great location right near transit, and they want to build an apartment building. The lot can realistically accommodate 16 homes, but today, the developer would stop at just 10 homes so that they can waive out of the parking requirements. As soon as they add that 11th apartment, they would need to provide six parking spaces. By eliminating parking mandates, the developer could fully build out the lot to include those six additional apartments. Six additional apartments may not sound significant, but when hundreds of sites across the city are able to build more housing, that's an incremental change that results in a lot more housing for New Yorkers. C V S for Housing Opportunity would make it easier for underused non-residential buildings, such as offices, to be converted into housing. To do this, the proposal would make a few changes to adaptive reuse regulations. First, the proposal would expand these regulations citywide to go beyond office districts. That way, a broader range of underused buildings, like vacant schools or former religious buildings, could be converted like vacant schools or former religious buildings, could be converted into housing. Second, the proposal would move the eligibility cutoff date up from 1961 or 1977 to 1991. This allows more recently constructed buildings to be converted into housing. And third, the proposal would enable the conversions to all types of housing, including supportive housing, shared housing, and dorms. Our next proposal would allow more small apartments in central locations by making it possible to build a building with only studio and one bedroom apartments. Today, we're forcing many people into living situations that they don't want. In some cases, that's a shelter or doubling up in an overcrowded unit. But our lack of housing options is also what forces young professionals to team up with roommates and occupy family-sized units. Allowing more small apartments could ease the pressure on these large units. Allowing buildings with more small apartments would involve changes to the dwelling unit factor or a measure of the minimum average unit size in a building. This zoning rule requires buildings to have a mix of big and small units if they want to max out their space. The dwelling unit factor is outdated and redundant with other codes that do a better job regulating the minimum unit size. Under this proposal, the dwelling unit factor would be removed in the areas of the city with the best proximity to transit, what's currently known as the transit zone and is shown on this map in the darker green color. Buildings would still be subject to rules like the Housing Maintenance Code and the Building Code, which do set minimum sizes for livable rooms and require windows and other measures for safety and livability. Income-restricted housing would still be subject to existing HPD rules about bedroom mixes. Outside of the central area, the zoning regulations would be reduced and simplified so that all multifamily buildings would have a dwelling unit factor of 500. Currently, arbitrary dwelling unit factors vary by zoning district. These changes could re-legalize an important housing type while easing the pressure on family-sized units. This proposal would also develop clear rules for building shared housing, or homes with private bedrooms but shared kitchens and other common facilities. Our current zoning does not have a clear path for building shared housing. Creating clear definitions and rules would make this process less complex and enable a fuller range of shared housing options. These rules would make it possible to build shared housing in any multifamily zoning district. This would enable the development of new construction shared housing, including affordable shared housing. These clear rules could also help to legalize existing and unregulated shared housing. Other cities like Seattle and San Diego have already re-legalized this kind of housing and found that it meets a need in their housing markets. New York City can learn from these examples, as well as the city's own history, to see the importance of re-legalizing small and shared options. HPD will pursue changes to other rules, including the Housing Maintenance Code, to make shared housing feasible. These rules, as well as other information about shared housing models, will be outlined in the Shared Housing Roadmap, which HPD will publish later this summer. Current zoning has rules for height-limited contextual buildings, but some sites are not able to use these rules. These sites, which include irregularly shaped lots or lots that already have a building on them, instead have to use outdated height-factor zoning. Height-factor zoning was intended to promote "tower-in-the-park" style of development in large tracts of land cleared during the urban renewal era. When these rules are used to add infill to zoning lots with existing buildings or irregularly shaped sites, they often result in completely out-of-context buildings, like the ones you see here. But today's rigid zoning rules force these tall, skinny buildings by not giving these sites the option to use contextual rules. Under this proposal, when development happens on campuses, zoning lots with existing buildings, any regular or obstructed sites, it could be contextual and height-limited instead of the out-of-context towers that we often see today. The distance between buildings rules should also be aligned with the state multiple dwelling law, enabling infill on sites that already have buildings, like you see in this illustration. The zoning will still include protections for open space, including a flexible envelope for sites that are over 20,000 square feet, and the introduction of a new 50% lot coverage maximum for campus sites. In lower-density districts, infill on campuses would have to abide by new height limits between 45 and 65 feet, as well as a 50% lot coverage maximum. These proposals do not provide any additional development rights. They simply allow building forms that better fit in with existing neighborhoods. This proposal also includes the creation of new zoning districts above 12 FAR. The maximum FAR for R11 and R12 districts would be 15 and 18 FAR respectively. These zoning districts could only be mapped with mandatory inclusionary housing. This proposal would also create two new medium-density districts, R62 and R6D. These districts are intended to fill the gap in the existing spectrum of zoning districts. No mapping actions are part of City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, meaning a separate action would be required to map these districts if appropriate locations were identified. The Landmark TDR program was created in the 1960s to relieve the financial burden on designated landmarks, which are subject to maintenance requirements and limited in their ability to redevelop or add new buildings to their lot. This proposal would allow landmarks to transfer development rights to more sites, including other zoning lots on the same zoning block as the landmark or immediately across the street or at intersection from the block. The proposal would also streamline approval process to a certification when no bulk modifications are necessary to accommodate the TDRs on a receiving site or an authorization if the applicant is seeking bulk modifications. Receiving sites can only increase FAR by 20% outside the highest-density commercial districts. Currently, the program is not available for landmarks that are located in historic districts or in low-density R1s or R5 zoning districts. This proposal would expand the applicability of the Landmark TDR program to these areas. These expansions of the Landmark TDR program would help to generate revenue to maintain landmarks while also unlocking additional housing opportunities. The Railroad Right-of-Way Special Permit was created in the early 1960s to ensure that developments do not interfere with railroad operations and that resulting development on these large and irregular sites is appropriate in bulk. However, the conditions of the special permit have become increasingly confusing, making it difficult to administer and resulting in significant cost and process burdens. This proposal would create clear definitions of what constitutes a railroad right-of-way, and it would reduce or eliminate approval procedures. These changes would streamline the process while protecting the planning goals that were core to the special permit's original intent. Today's zoning includes rules that offer floor area exemptions that were designed to incentivize developers to include amenity space. Amenity space can include common areas or shared facilities, like recreational space, laundry rooms, or trash disposal. The amenity rules could also be satisfied by including apartments with three or more bedrooms at the end of a corridor, incentivizing the creation of more family-sized homes. These rules would be extended to all multifamily buildings, where today, they're only available in the high-density districts. They would also be simplified and updated to improve the incentives for building amenities. The proposal also includes changes to create better design outcomes. First, this proposal would establish a new system of street rule regulation. Today's regulations often prevent new buildings from fitting in with their neighborhood context. This framework, which would be based on building type rather than on zoning district, would enable buildings to align with their neighbors. Next, split lots often face difficulty locating their floor area on the lot. Changes would provide additional flexibility for development rights to be shifted onto the higher density of the two portions of the zoning law. New York City has a diverse array of special districts that have been enacted to further neighborhood planning goals. As a general approach, the current proposal carries through any relevant changes to the special district in order to ensure that these areas also have appropriate housing opportunities. In order to be respectful of the special district, rules will be modified where the changes directly conflict with the special district's goals. So for instance, many special districts have FARs that differ significantly from the underlying zoning, like R8 in the portions of the Special Quinton District. In those instances, the new UAP FAR would build on the special district FAR rather than simply eliminating it. The proposal takes a similar approach when considering the interactions of other components and the special rules contained in special districts. The Environmental Review for the Citywide Text Amendment is intended to provide an estimate of the amount, type, approximate location, and overall form of future development to identify the range of impacts that may occur in the future with City of Yes for Housing Opportunity compared to a future about it. To do this, the Environmental Review utilized three methods of analysis, as shown on this slide. Pro-typical sites illustrate specific aspects of the proposal and how that could facilitate development at the scale of an individual site; citywide estimates to quantify the range of future development outcomes at citywide scale; and representative neighborhoods, which allow us to analyze collective effects of the proposal for density-related technical areas. The EIS estimates approximately 58,000 incremental units on the low end, up to 109,000 incremental units on the high-end scenarios. Citywide, this is a little less than a unit per acre over 15 years. For context, a typical block in Eastern Queens is between three and four acres. So this could mean the addition of a small multifamily building or a few ADUs being added to a block within the next 15 years. Some neighborhoods may see closer to 2.5 units per acre over 15 years under high-end scenario estimates. An environmental impact statement was conducted, and a notice completion for the draft EIS was issued on Friday, April 26, 2024. The draft EIS identifies no potential for impacts in the areas listed on the left of the slide; potential for significant adverse impacts were identified for categories listed on the right. It's important to note that for some site-specific impact analysis, potential for significant adverse impacts cannot be precluded. The likelihood of impacts occurring depends on existing context. For example, the potential for shadows impacts depends on sunlight-sensitive resources, and potential for noise impacts depends on the ambient noise context of a specific future development site. Other density-related impact analyses, like open space and schools, do demonstrate that the additional population introduced by City of Yes for Housing Opportunity at a neighborhood scale could strain existing infrastructure and result in the potential for significant adverse impacts. Mitigation measures are being explored and be further refined in the final EIS. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity emerges directly from the goals outlined in the City's Fair Housing Plan, Where We Live NYC, and implements strategies from where we live. Specifically, Strategy 2.1 of Where We Live is increased housing opportunities, particularly for low-income New Yorkers and amenity-rich neighborhoods. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity is advancing this goal through increasing housing options in low-density neighborhoods, such as encouraging missing middle housing types, as well as ADUs, generating new opportunities to redevelop underused public properties through our campus proposals, and creating new affordable units in high-density neighborhoods through UAP. This proposal also advances Strategy 3.2, improving housing quality and preserving affordability for existing residents. UAP would support the creation of new affordable housing, but also serve to preserve existing affordable housing, as existing buildings with qualifying affordable housing could take advantage of the higher UAP FARs, as long as those units are permanently affordable. Lastly, the proposal supports Strategy 4.1, expanding the number of homes available to New Yorkers to receive rental assistance benefits. New income-restricted housing enabled by UAP is particularly important for voucher holders, as the city has maximized opportunities for voucher holders to qualify for new affordable housing through the updated Housing Connect portal. Voucher holders are also not subject to minimum income requirements and are eligible for units with rental prices covered by their voucher or rental assistance program. Overall, City of Yes for Housing Opportunity represents a city falling through on commitments made in Where We Live to further fair housing and to address our housing shortage and affordability crisis. Since referral, several independent organizations have published research related to City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. These reports underscore the premises that this text amendment is based on and emphasize the opportunities these proposals could create. Namely, this research emphasizes that housing production has not kept pace with demand. The housing shortage has both dire human consequences and detrimental effects on the economy. The Citizens Budget Commission found that providing enough housing could add $1.4 to $1.9 billion to the city's tax base. Reports by the Citizens Housing and Planning Council and the New York Housing Conference demonstrated that what housing production has occurred has been limited to only a few areas, and that low-density areas have added little to no housing in recent years. This uneven distribution is particularly true of income-restricted affordable housing. The Regional Planning Association outlines the benefits of low-density proposals, in particular accessory dwelling units and missing middle housing, and emphasize how the lack of these options today disproportionately impacts lower-income families. This material has been provided to the commission for your reference and is also available online. These changes we walk through today are the most significant proposals in City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. Overall, this text amendment aims to create a little more housing everywhere so that each neighborhood does its part to address our housing needs, and a few neighborhoods don't feel the intense pressure that they do today. It's not just about more housing, though; it's also about more types of housing: multifamily housing, where it's currently not allowed because of exclusionary zoning; homes of different sizes to meet different people's needs; and crucially, far more affordable and supportive housing. We'll close by sharing a roadmap for the process to come. After more than a year getting in front of as many audiences as we can to solicit feedback for this proposal, we've presented to all 59 of the city's community boards for a total of 176 meetings. While we already accepted 28 community board recommendations received in the official timeline of 60 days, we also accept and will make sure that the City Planning Commission receives every single recommendation that we receive before the city planning vote. The City Planning Commission will consider and vote on this proposal in the coming months, and if approved, the process will culminate in a city council vote sometime this fall. Across New York City, we've heard from communities that are feeling the consequences of our housing shortage and recognize that the status quo is unacceptable. This includes a need for more deeply affordable housing options for low-income New Yorkers, and we heard support for income averaging, part of UAP, and the Deep Affordability Option at MIH. But some ask for affordability mandates or express doubt that income-restricted units would be built in their neighborhoods or reach the New Yorkers that need them most. Although some community boards have appreciated our incremental and citywide approach, others have expressed concern that this isn't going far enough in the face of our dire housing crisis or want us to proceed neighborhood by neighborhood. Many community boards have expressed a generalized concern about Save Yes for Housing Opportunity, removing oversight community boards, and either oppose any new development in their neighborhood or express a preference for neighborhood or site-specific approaches to planning. As you heard earlier, our thorough environmental review found limited impacts on infrastructure. We've heard about significant existing needs, especially for schools, sewers, and the transportation network. Many community boards wanted parking requirements to remain in place, at least in areas with poor transit access, expressing doubt that the market would meet demand in auto-oriented neighborhoods. Many community boards express concerns about the safety of accessory dwelling units, which is generally regulated through non-zoning codes. Negative experiences of informal units have resulted in skepticism about an enforcement regime for these homes. Many neighborhoods express a need for more family-sized units and reservations about small and shared apartments. Some community boards, particularly in high-density areas, have concerns about development on NYCHA campuses. The proposal aims to allow contextual and height-limited infill, but many express concerns that the proposal enables significant new development opportunities. Both high and low-density neighborhoods have expressed desire to preserve neighborhood character or that Save Yes for Housing Opportunity runs counter to downzoning passed during previous administrations. That concludes our presentation. Have you to take questions?
Great. Well, thank you very much to all of you. And let me just take a moment to thank you for all the efforts that you have undertaken throughout the city over the past couple of months and over the past couple of years, but really over the last couple of months. It's been an incredible effort on the part of this team at the department, so I just want to thank you and congratulate you. Let me just start off, before I go to my colleagues here, by asking, you know, if you could just lay out some of the biggest misperceptions of the proposal, things that you might want to correct in advance of the public hearing on Wednesday. Obviously, we expect to hear from people who will come in and love the proposal, and we expect people who'll come in and not love it so much. But there also is a lot of misperception about what it actually is. Do you want to highlight a couple of the biggest that you think are worth addressing in advance?
Sure. Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm also joined by Stephanie Shalou from our Environmental Assessment and Review Division, and Frank Rochella from our Zoning Division, who can help as necessary. You know, this is a very big question. I'll highlight maybe just a couple. The big one perennially is with Citywide is this is a one-size-fits-all proposal. And, you know, as you've just seen, I see this as, you know, just a large number of proposals that are keyed to the full range of neighborhood densities and the full range of neighborhood types that we see in New York City, informed by about three to three, four years of existing conditions analysis, by folks in our zoning division, by folks in our urban design division, by folks in our housing division as well. And, you know, for instance, looking to New York City's past to create missing-middle proposals that fit in with existing neighborhood context but that we have inadvertently or sometimes intentionally prohibited in the decades since 1961. I'm thinking here of town center, two, three, four stories residential above a commercial ground floor, or, you know, modest multifamily on large sites near transit. You could say the same thing about accessory dwelling units, but looking to other jurisdictions, things that have worked really well with the existing range of neighborhoods that we see in New York City, in order to, like I said, create a range of proposals that work across the full range of New York City neighborhoods. My team has also created applicability maps for every community district and every council district. And I personally am struck by how every single community district or every single council district is different. The proposals that apply in those areas work together in different ways to, I think, create a set of proposals that enable every single community district, every single council district, every single neighborhood to contribute. It's such a simple idea, but we've just never tried anything of this geographic breadth. We've never been able to tell every neighborhood that we're all in this together, and we think we all can contribute. So I think that that's one of the main things that I would want to get at. Underscoring from this as well, one more thing before we move on to more questions, is, you know, we've heard, but there are no guarantees of affordable housing. And I want to say that, well, that argument kind of implies that we're doing some sort of wild experiment here with UAP. Will it work? You know, will it not? Who knows? I see it as very different from that. As with other aspects of the proposal, we're taking a tool, an existing framework that works really well today, but within a limited geography, in a few parts of the city. For instance, our voluntary inclusionary For instance, our voluntary inclusionary framework applies to about 13% of medium and high-density districts. It produces a lot of housing, but it's limited geography. We're taking that, and we're expanding it to 100% of medium and high-density districts, and consequently, we fully expect that we'll see an order of magnitude more income restricted housing out of it. And we're pushing AMIs down and enabling income averaging, so that we absolutely believe that UAP in particular, and the proposals more generally, are calibrated to maximize the amount of income restricted housing that we can create over some of the alternatives that we've definitely considered. Much more to say, I'll leave it at that for now, just so as not to go on too long.
Okay, thank you. I've got just a couple more, and then I'm going to go to Commissioners Duack and Benjamin, Ramperchat, and anybody else. I got an email earlier with some suggested talking points that people could raise at the hearing in opposition to the proposal. And, you know, one of them was, you know, the one that you just raised about lack of affordable housing, and I think that you made it clear, there's an expansion of existing program, voluntary is 13%, this would go to 100% of all medium and high-density areas. So we'll put that aside for a second. One of the other arguments was lowering housing quality, that the proposal allows for reduced standards in housing quality, including less air and light, smaller windows, smaller setbacks, and no minimum unit sizes. Obviously, there are components of this proposal that is intended to enable more smaller-sized units, but can you talk about the argument here that this would lower housing quality and reduce standards?
Sure, yeah, we have heard this from a few different folks. I would refer you back to the slides that Winnie and Veronica presented on access to light and air. So, since 1961, and then with the advent of quality housing in 1980, we've had 30-foot rear yard requirements, 30-foot window-to-lot line requirements, 30-foot as a minimum court dimension, you know, 70% lot coverage maximums, and that's all fine and dandy, it sounds great. What we've found over the decades, that that set of standards basically forces you into a bar-building form with a double-loaded corridor with apartments that only have one exposure. So, that really makes it difficult to do family-sized units, it really makes it difficult to have things like windows in your kitchen, windows in your bathroom, and so, counterintuitively, 30 feet has led to worse access to light and air. This is an example of where our existing condition analysis by Zoning Division, Urban Design Division, has, you know, really been enlightening in a way that informs these proposals. I live in Hillman Houses on Lower East Side, 1950, built as a, basically affordable housing for union workers. My kitchen has a window, my bathroom has a window. You know, it's crazy to me that some of the new housing that's built today, market rate, you know, new apartments that are going for, you know, whatever, have worse access to light and air than I do in my, you know, 1950s, late 1940s affordable housing building. So I think that's what they're referring to, and I can say, it's mistaken. These changes that we're making are not lowering standards, they're actually, again, re-legalizing a building type that used to be allowed, that's great, that we inadvertently rendered illegal in 60s and beyond.
Okay, a couple more from me. Reduction in council member power. By converting many ULP actions into discretionary certifications, the initiative reduces the power of elected council members.
Gotcha. So you saw slides on this, basically, as well. I think there are a few areas where existing special permits, we propose to change those to authorizations, and I'll tell you why. These tend to be special permits that date to the 1960s. There's Railroad Right-of-Way that you saw. There's Landmark TDR, which you also saw. There's also a special permit that enables supportive housing developments in districts that have a higher community facility FAR, like R6 and R7 districts, a special permit to enable supportive housing to access that higher FAR. We propose to make those into an authorization. Here's why. If you created a special permit in 1962 for Railroad Right-of-Way, or 1968 for Landmark TDR, this is pre-ULP, you know, and special permit process has gotten so onerous in the years since then, you know, advent of environmental review, advent of ULP, end of the Board of Estimate, council at the end of the process, that basically, these actions aren't functional anymore. We don't see any Landmark TDRs anymore, you can't use it, it can't fulfill its original function because of the process burdens associated with it. And so, just to continue with that example, if we take Landmark TDR, expand the radius, reduce the procedure, we are restoring its original purpose, to create a meaningful opportunity for landmarks to get revenue from their unused development rights, in order to keep those landmarks in sound first-class condition. So I, you know, I met with Landmark Church in Crown Heights a couple months ago now, their roof is basically falling in. When I told them what our proposal was, they recognized immediately that it will give them multiple opportunities to sell those development rights on the same block or across the street from that block, in a way that will enable them to repair the roof. That's what this thing was for, and so, reducing process burden, so it's actual functional thing, is, you know, an example that's really important to housing opportunity. Rezonings to get significantly more density, still necessary, still require ULP. Rezonings to go from manufacturing to residential or whatever, still require ULP, not reducing procedure. And so when I hear that concern, you know, my question back is just like, okay, what instance in these proposals are you concerned about removing oversight, and let's talk about those, let's address those.
Great, thank you. You addressed the environmental issue, and I'm going to just pose two more to you. The TDR that you noted on the subject of landmarks, it was cited here that transfer of development rights could result in the creation of disproportionately large towers, which may disrupt the character of neighborhoods, creating Frankenstein buildings that overshadow their surroundings.
Oh, I think we haven't done a good enough job to underscore the fact that there's a 20% limit on the increase today on a receiving site, you can bump up 20%, you can't go above that. That's today, that's tomorrow, we're not proposing to change that, outside of the highest-density commercial district. So if you're not in a 15-FAR commercial district or whatever, you're capped at 20%, and you would not see any Frankenbuildings or anything like that.
Okay, clear enough. Last one, campus infill. Initiative allows for infill development on public land, which would take away much-needed open space. Moreover, there is no requirement for this new housing to be 100% affordable, which undermines efforts to support low-income residents.
Gotcha, yeah. We need to reintroduce, I think, our contextual infill proposals. If you have a campus with existing buildings today, you have your development rights, you know, you have your ability to develop on the site today, but like Winnie and Veronica noted, this bad zoning forces you to do non-contextual development. Everybody hates this. If you live on the campus, you hate it, if you're in the neighborhood, you hate it. And it's the last few set of sites where we basically prohibit modern, height-limited development on those sites. So all we're proposing is to say that when infill happens, we want it to be modern, height-limited, contextual infill, as opposed to the tall, skinny stuff that makes people, you know, go crazy. In terms of 100% affordability requirements, that is, you know, well outside our authority to enact through the zoning. That's something that we can, you know, that the city can look at when we own the land. And so when we've talked, for instance, you know, you raised NYCHA, when we've talked to strategic planning at NYCHA, when we've talked to real estate, when we've talked to the Citywide Council on Presidents, because we do want to talk to tenant associations as well. NYCHA made clear that for the last 10 years and into the future, infill on any NYCHA sites is 100% affordable, so that tenants understand that these buildings will fit in, and that at least a portion of them are for existing residents. And whether it's RadPact, whether it's, you know, Public Housing Trust, whether it's infill, any of those moves require approval of the tenant associations on those campuses. And NYCHA has said, 100% of our success in recent years has depended on those two things. And so personally, I am very inclined to try to help them do what they can, and I do feel like they've turned a corner recently, addressing the capital backlog to ensure the continued health of NYCHA for existing residents and future residents into the decade ahead.
Just one follow-up there. If we're going to enable more flexibility or more opportunity to do campus infill, when you noted that in terms of affordability requirements, it is outside our authority to enact those within zoning, can you just say a moment why that is?
Oh, I mean, if you're talking about 100% affordability requirement, then you would be forcing a property owner to work with the government in order to do something with their site. Because 100% affordability is not financially feasible in terms of a privately-owned, privately-financed development, you have a regulatory takings issue there. In terms of attaching affordability requirements onto any additional flexibility for infill, if, you know, again, the purpose of these proposals is to say that if and when infill happens, we want it to be modern, height-limited, contextual infill, rather than the tall, skinny buildings that drive everybody crazy. If we said, okay, you can do modern, height-limited, contextual buildings, as long as you provide XYZ affordability, what would happen is we'd basically reincentivize the tall, skinny buildings on campuses, again, kind of undermining the whole purpose of that, this component of the Housing Opportunity Proposals as well. Happy to have more discussions on this, I'm sure we will, but like I said, we need to reintroduce, I would say, the contextual infill proposals. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, John. Let me go to Commissioner Duack.
Thank you. It's in my opinion that the UAP will be the biggest driver of development. So, this was introduced prior to 485X being released by the state. How does it align with 485X in that we are requiring 60% AMI levels, and 485X is an 80% AMI? How do they overlap, and how will a developer be able to take advantage of the incentives and also the UAP proposal? That was my first question. The second question is, on the amenity space, is that in excess of the UAP bump? Or does that deduct from any UAP bump?
Great questions. You're correct that we were developing UAP with the underlying assumption of an eventual state-level tax benefit in order to support mixed-income multifamily. And, you know, in part, in large part due to the city's advocacy, we think that the state ended up in a good place, a way that looks very much like the existing framework. What do I mean by that? There's sort of a strategic misalignment there, almost. In order to do multifamily, mixed-income multifamily in the city, you need a tax benefit, it's just not feasible otherwise. Once you're taking that tax benefit, then the zoning gives you the option to do a bigger building, as long as you comply with the zoning, in this instance, drive down affordability levels to UAP. So in that way, we expect 485X interactions with UAP to be very similar to old 421A interactions with the old voluntary inclusionary housing program, where in combination, you get more affordable housing at better AMIs than either program can achieve on its own. And so, like I said, we're very happy where 485X wound up, and we expect it to look a lot like the 421A voluntary collaboration that has created tens of thousands of affordable, or, you know, not tens of thousands, but about 10,000 affordable units over the existence.
So, it is possible to take advantage of both of them, even with the averaging of the AMIs?
Yeah, you would have to take your tax benefit and then drive down average AMIs from, say, 80 in most instances to 60.
And that would still qualify you at the state level for the 485?
60% AMI satisfies the 80% AMI.
Satisfies, there's no requirement, okay.
Yeah.
So the next question was to the amenity space, is that deducted from any UAP bonus?
That's deducted from gross floor area generally, so you have your gross floor area, and then you have your zoning floor area. Under these proposals, qualifying amenity space would not count towards your zoning square footage, right? And so you would be able to use more of your building for outright residential, you know, living space, as opposed to having, you know, trash rooms and everything like that eat up your floor area.
So it would, the UAP bump would simply stay current with the current zoning rule?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Just based on Commissioner Dex's question, right now, there's about 30%, I think, of the floor area that's not counted against your zoning square footage, if you include hallways and rooftops and...
I think it's more like 10, but Frank can...
Stairways, hallways, elevators, lobbies.
Elevators are, lobbies are, roofs may or may not be. When we do analysis of buildings, what we assume is, if you took the zoning floor area, and you then wanted to see how big a building typically would be, we do increase it by about 10%. So, and that, what we find is that that varies, right, different buildings, different types, but that 10% number feels pretty consistent across sort of the average buildings that we see. So also, just it's worth saying, in some of the amenity things, you are already allowed and required to do an amenity deduction today for quality housing, that's like 3%. You get a deduction for like laundry rooms and things like that, so the 5% is sort of like keeping the existing rules that we have, maybe making them a little bit more simpler, but you already have deductions like that in place.
So it's not increasing the amount, I think we have footage that can be deducted from zoning.
So if you're in a quality housing building, you have the 3%.
Let's do both, if you're not in a quality housing building.
In a non-quality housing building, you didn't have that allowance for deductions. You had other rules, though, and I think that's one of the other things that we've seen, is you may have had an open space requirement outdoors, or on the roof, or, and it really varied in different parts in the city, and so this is really just trying to bring a consistent one across all the residential.
Right, but you can understand why it's difficult, then, to conceive when people are looking at this, how different building typologies and different neighborhoods would be affected, because there are different rules currently.
I think there are different rules, but they all sort of do the same thing, right? Like, they allow, the zoning tries to push amenity space in buildings, does it in different ways. By bringing a little bit of consistency to that, is that bad? I don't think so, because at the end of the day, we're talking about, at the most, 5% of the building, which is pretty small in comparison to the overall building itself. We could just, right, but I, that's...
Yeah, we can differ on whether it's small or not, but I do want to understand better for different, the high density, the medium density, what the effects might be of additional excluded floor area.
Okay.
And in terms of the 18 neighborhood types...
Just to Frank's answer, I want to add that you still have your height limits, you still have your building envelope. So when I'm thinking about the predictability of building forms, I probably wouldn't be rooting around in the deductions, although, fair question.
But I think we're looking for new building. You spoke about building types that existed when we had the more generic R6. You could build brownstones, you could build townhouses, you could build garden apartments, there were a lot of things.
300-foot, you know, whatever.
But we decided, we decided that R6 was not, was too broad-based. And so we started redefining different areas to more closely match the built form to what was permitted. We've now decided that that was maybe not the best idea, that our 400-odd downzonings to more particularly match the as-built character... That our 400-odd downzoning to more particularly match the as-built character may be led to a paucity of new housing opportunities. So now as we look at this, and how to increase housing opportunities as distinct from affordable housing opportunities, because they're not, I'm not yet convinced they're the same thing. If we're including more design controls for the infill type buildings, are we running into the same problem that creativity and different design solutions will no longer be permitted again?
So are you asking about the lower density changes or some of the...
I'm asking about the...
Contextual infractions.
Lower to mid-density, but not really the lower, except for the corner lots and the town-centered developments, and I guess maybe the TODs.
Yeah, I mean, for the lower density initiatives, I would say that we kind of overshot with a lot of the lower density rezonings, where we went lower than the types of buildings that you see in those areas today. And this is where I look back to zoning division, urban design division, housing division for the existing conditions analysis, really, three, two, three years, three, four years of existing conditions analysis, that found way more multifamily buildings in low-density districts that prohibit it today than we expected, you know, on large sites near transit, along those commercial corridors. And the slide Veronica showed too, even if you are a two-family home in a two-family district today, you're typically overbuilt, you don't comply with yards, and you don't comply with parking, and, you know, your perimeter heights are too tall, things like that. So I think we overshot, and so we're trying to adjust our way back to a more rational framework in the low-density districts. In terms of, you know, medium density, it sounded like you were referring to infill on zoning lots with existing buildings. We are providing a measure of flexibility for larger sites, like campus sites, height limits with a measure of flexibility, and new lot coverage maximums that are actually more stringent than the underlying zoning, to ensure that we're enabling height limited infill on those sites while also protecting the open space that also characterizes some of the larger campuses as well.
Right, but some of the most successful pairings have been senior housing of a high-density, high-height in sites like NYCHA, and it would seem that we're going to prohibit it, and that concerns me in particular, because one of the reports talked about there are 1.2 million households that are underhoused, where there are less than 0.5 people per room.
Mm-hmm.
And that makes sense, because so many of the NYCHA developments, Mitchell Lama and other supportive housing were built at a time and the people who moved in are now seniors.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, it seems to me that unlocking that potential is something we should be trying to do, so putting high-density senior housing on NYCHA campuses would be a good thing.
It's great. No, I mean, I worked on, for instance, I've been at City Planning about 10 years, I've worked on dozens of Merrill zoning overrides specifically for things like that. I worked on Batonsa senior housing in the Bronx, ZAD zoning override, Livingston in downtown Brooklyn on Myrtle there, that enabled, like you said, you know, senior housing on NYCHA campus, you provide a new...
And it frees up family housing units for the people who need them.
Exactly, you got an empty nester in a three-bedroom apartment, they can move into the new building. This is absolutely an attempt to facilitate that.
I would ask if you would take another look at the campus proposals and find a way to encourage more that type of high-density use.
Yeah, that's exactly what we are doing, and I'll say that Frank Rushala back here and Chris Hayner, the deputy director of zoning division, they, with a fine-tooth comb, looked at every type of affordable infill development that we've seen, whether it's a NYCHA campus, Mitchell Lama, Limited Housing Dividend Corporation, whatever. They looked at every single building to make sure that when we are implementing new flexible but height limited envelopes in those campuses, that we were accommodating that type of development specifically on these sites. So what our proposals would do is just mean that, sure, NYCHA still has to go through resident approval process, we're not touching that.
I know what they need to do.
Yeah, you know what they need to do. They still, we're not touching that, but we are ensuring that they don't need to go through, you know, some Merrill zoning overrides take two years, that they would not have to, zoning would not get in the way of a, you know, the Batonsas, that's an R7X, it complies with R7X. The one on Myrtle, it required some street wall waivers, but our proposals would enable that without a two-year, you know, Merrill zoning override process. And that's what I mean when I'm talking about helping NYCHA do what they've been doing in order to turn the corner on a lot of the most dire issues that they face.
I mean, for, I'm going to stop my questions here, although I'm hoping that we can continue the meeting that we had last week, because I've got a lot more issues. But, you know, NYCHA's problems, as well as the problem separate housing production from affordable housing. Affordable housing in part is an economic problem that's not addressed by zoning, and it's not going to be addressed by zoning. Without the 421A, when the 421A program started, that is what built up most of the apartments in Queens, and parts of the Bronx, and parts of Brooklyn. And then we cut back on the 421A problem, because we were trying to eliminate it from market rate areas, and we got much less utility and building out of our reduced 421A program. So my concern with the UAP and frankly with MIH is that expenses in residential buildings keep mounting. And the more affordable housing we have, the fewer people to pay those expenses, and how is that factored in over time? What happens to these buildings that we have created when the affordable people are just paying the rent stabilization increase, because they don't have to requalify? Even if they win the lottery, they just get to pay the rent stabilized equivalent. What happens over time to these buildings? And how do they become self-sustaining? And I don't expect you to be able to answer that now, but it's a conversation I'd like to continue.
No, that's great. HPD is not here today to help us answer, but we should bring them into this conversation as well. I can say, I welcome that question, because one of the fundamental concerns when we're talking about creating affordable housing through the zoning, especially if we're talking about privately owned sites with privately financed projects, is that you need to look feasible, you need to look at feasibility squarely. You know, we can create very onerous affordable housing requirements, and if they are not feasible for privately owned sites, privately financed development, then we won't get any housing and we won't get any affordable housing. We've seen this again and again in jurisdictions around the country. Affordability requirements are so much easier to get wrong than they are to get right. I think we're very fortunate in New York City to have a team of folks at HPD, at City Planning, who I would say are far and away the best in the country at creating affordable housing, whether it's through zoning or through subsidy tools, there's just nobody else who's even close. And so working together with that team and then trying to make the argument that the proposals that we have put out there really are calibrated to thread that needle, to require a lot, but also to be feasible, so that we have an actual pipeline of affordable housing that is made to last for the long term. And we didn't talk much about our preservation aspects here too, but UAP, Winnie mentioned, is also a very powerful preservation tool in order to lower and extend affordability permanently into the future for existing affordable housing that might be having financial difficulties.
Okay, and my last comment to talk about this is just that, when NYCHA was created, and it's a wonderful, wonderful program and tool, but as time went on, the income that NYCHA enjoys was not enough to pay for the sustaining and the continued maintenance and upgrading of the developments. And so they ran into a situation where they began to put off maintenance, because they didn't have the money. And then as more maintenance was put off, more major problems developed. And that is my fear, that we are potentially creating another situation where in the future, with entirely good assumptions and entirely good intentions, we will create a situation where the market rate housing is not enough to subsidize what needs to happen, or the market rate housing becomes more expensive than the market will bear, and the market rate housing is abandoned, like the 70s in New York. So that's something I'd like to understand more before I...
Yes, let's bring HPD into this conversation as well. Agree with you that what's happened to federal funding in NYCHA over the decades...
And city funding.
Is a real tragedy. And so, you know, part of housing opportunity is to say, you know, while we would, we need more federal funding, we also want to do everything we can at the city level in order to support, you know, the ongoing health of NYCHA into the future as well, and we think that this is an important part of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Ramperchad.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions too, some are technical in terms of sections of law, but I'm going to, I guess on Wednesday, are they also going to have a, no, okay, so then I'm going to just throw a few out at you right now. With the ADUs, you know, I appreciate the department, we have, you know, 386 pages face upon testimony from all the community boards, it was great to see their, have their input, obviously. With ADUs, do we know where we're at with DEP and the discussions that the agencies have? And the reason I bring it up is, once again, I brought it up during the certification point, you do a new ADU, do you need to do, for example, sewer connection? Is it a straight sewer connection from the ADU to the street? Is it into the existing house? How would that work? Do we have clarification from them? Because that's, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars, and that already would be a turn off for a lot of people. I'm just bringing the reality, because I deal with it in the industry that I'm in, and, you know, it's a big, it's a big question that I think they would need answered. And the other question is, on slide 31, you were talking about HPD is looking to modify the rules and release it later this summer. Do you know an exact date that they're going to do it? Because before you know, I know we're going to be pulling down this in September, so just, it would be great to have that information, because, you know, the reality is, we have to apply the law to build this stuff, and you want to see what really would work, because I know a lot of community boards are concerned about, you know, people don't want too many ADUs, I guess, in their backyard, but the reality is, will it actually get built? And I know you're referencing other cities, I'm also curious about how many ADUs were developed in other cities. I'm just having a number, just if you guys have that info.
Gotcha. I mean, the one jurisdiction I know offhand is Los Angeles County, where very quickly, within a couple of years, ADUs became the largest individual segment of housing production in Los Angeles County. Different situation, you know, you have larger lots there than you do here, so I don't want to overpromise here, but other jurisdictions definitely have had success with ADUs, and we've got an eye on them. As far as your initial ADU question, I know that these issues have been teed up for the interagency task force with DEP, MakiJ, FDNY, DOB, HPD. I'm going to turn to Veronica to see if there is any resolution right now on the DEP hookup question that Commissioner Ramperchad asked, or whether that is something that will come out in a little bit with the findings of the interagency working group.
Yeah, so I don't have an answer to share exactly of the sewer hookups question, but that is part of the purview of this working group. It's not just making recommendations for like changes to other bodies of law that would enable ADUs, but also making it clear to homeowners how they would easily add ADUs, so different sort of best practices from other cities. You build on those in order to make it actually feasible for people to do things, like make sure that they have, you know, affordable but reliable, like sewer hookups, things, other sort of like construction requirements. So that is, DEP is one of the like key stakeholders in this interagency working group and is working on that for a variety of ADU typologies.
Okay, so we'll circle back to that.
Thank you, and then on the shared housing roadmap, we'll get back to you on that. I will try to pin HPD down on the date.
Okay, my next question is with regards to these transit maps, what was the rationale to choose a half a mile?
Gotcha.
Curious on that.
So there was internal discussion about how to, you know, create these geographies, and one of the important items of feedback that we heard from several different folks, even before we referred, is how will this work in the future if you have like IBX or something like that? Is there any way to make sure that it would be automatically applicable in the future? And also we heard feedback like, we want the transit zone, the greater transit zone to be easy to explain, like how do you explain it? And so looking at those particular, those items of feedback that we got from, you know, multiple folks, we decided to define the outer transit zone in terms of that radius. You know, a half-mile radius, it's a radius that exists within the zoning today for various different types of uses, it's a radius that encompasses, you know, roughly speaking, a neighborhood, it's a 10-minute walk for people, you know, walking at an average pace. I'm about a half-mile from the subway myself over in Hillman. And so it was, one, seen as appropriate geography based on zoning precedent, two, it was something that could be defined in such a way that when a new transit stop opens up for IBX in the future, that the zoning can be automatic, in particular, the TOD, the Transit Oriented Development Proposal, can be automatically applicable. And we found that it leads to less confusion, people can wrap their minds around that, half-mile from a transit stop, in a way that a way more complicated transit area would be.
So now you mention that, how would, I'm just an average person, how do I know I'm in a transit zone? Will that map be accessible on Zola's website? And also, would you coordinate it with the DOB biz system? Even though I know DOB is moving towards the DOB now, I still go to biz, and when you go to biz and you go to property profile, you'll see landmark district? Yes, it'll say. So will you have that incorporated?
Frank and Laura Smith can correct me if I'm incorrect, but I do believe the idea is to put it, create a geography, put it on Zola, so that if you're a plan examiner or if you're a property owner, you can go. And today, if you choose your site on Zola, it tells you which geographies are relevant to you. This would pop up, you know, this greater transit zone is relevant to you, and then let you know what you can do with your property.
Okay, and I'm just going to, I have more, but I just want to, and all the commissioners have questions, so I'm just going to just ask for clarification on something here. And for, in the new zoning here, the proposed one, section 23 to 12, there are two terms that are being used for qualifying residential sites, which are defined, and then quality, qualifying transit accessible sites, which is not defined. Will that be defined in the text that we, or can you add that in just for clarification?
Because I think it may just be that the wrong term was used. I can check it. It's meant, in overtime, I think if you looked at the original draft, we used qualifying transit accessible, but I think over time we realized that term was maybe not the best. Also, it's really long, so I think we just went to qualifying residential, and we may have missed one. We'll take a look.
Got it. And my last one, in section 2522 for parking, when it says previously approved, is that by DOB?
Yeah, that's, oh, that's general idea.
So, and...
If it's, essentially the determination is, are you an existing building or are you not?
And just one last one, if a job's been approved today, and say this is past December, January, they can go back and file an amendment to change it, like for example, if they provided no, you know, they provided parking today, but maybe in December...
Yeah, I mean, I think if, the general rule for things like that is, as long as you have a complete construction, you don't have your CFOs, you can change things. And that happens no matter, in all others, zoning changes too, it's not special to this one.
Right.
But that would, I think, be true here too.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
But yeah, you will absolutely be looking at more textured vesting language. That typically happens during the commission review period. We hear from property owners that would be affected by this, and we determine what type of vesting makes sense with regard to different proposals. And so we'll be following up with you in the months ahead.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich?
I wanted to follow up on, it's a question I've asked you before, but just to expand on it, because I need more clarification. So for the campuses, and specifically for the NYCHA campuses, one analysis that is out there is that... there is that there would be private developers who would develop on the green spaces or the open spaces in NYCHA campuses, and that those buildings are not required to be affordable, never, even a hundred percent affordable for NYCHA residents. And so, my impression was that that was not true, and that NYCHA campuses are owned by the city, and therefore it's the government, but now I'm a bit confused because one of the things that you said was that it's, in respect to campuses, was that, when I wrote it down here, you know, there would be private owners and that we can't, we wouldn't be able to mandate that that be a hundred percent affordable. So I need some clarification on, because like I said, this is also an opportunity to clarify for everyone, really, like the analysis that's out there, and then like-
Gotcha. No, that's a great question. So, as a fundamental matter, and there's, you know, case law on this in New York State, zoning can't work differently depending on who owns the land, right? So we would not be able to say, for instance, through the zoning, publicly owned land has to be a hundred percent affordable. That's something that happens on the transactional side. So if an administration wants to say, with this particular bit of city-owned land, we wanna do a disposition, and we wanna require that anybody who develops it, develops a hundred percent affordable housing, can totally do that, but it's via the city's authority as a landowner, not via the city's authority as a land use regulator, so we have to make that distinction. So when we're talking about NYCHA campuses, for instance, we can't, as a matter of zoning, say that anything that happens there has to be a hundred percent affordable. But NYCHA as property owner can say, as they have for the last decade, anything that, any new buildings that happen on these sites, you know, in order to let you onto our property, in order to let you build anything here, we require that to be a hundred percent affordable. So it's the distinction between government as regulator and government as property owner. We're talking about regulation now, zoning, and so that would be beyond our authority to make a hundred percent affordable housing requirement for any site in the city.
So the first part, because I do think it's really like two questions in one. The first-
It's on now.
Okay, thank you. So the first part is, because I'm, I still need clarification, the campuses, are those, those are city-owned campuses, and so the first analysis that's out there is that on NYCHA, for NYCHA infill, private developers would come in and develop on the land, so is that part true?
So, I don't think ownership of NYCHA property is the same as like a DPR-controlled site or, you know, a site controlled by de-cas or something. It's not city ownership in that sense. Obviously, the federal government is involved there and has special approval processes if you wanna do anything on that site. So it's not up to the administration alone to say what can or can't happen on those sites.
I think, if I can, I think Commissioner's asking whether a private entity, if I'm understanding, whether a private entity could come in and have the right to develop on a NYCHA site without NYCHA, perhaps without NYCHA, you know, what would be the process for that? I think, if I'm understanding you correctly-
Yeah, that's the, that's the one, that's the one analysis that's out there that part, it's part of, for NYCHA developments and NYCHA infill, private develop, the open spaces that are currently available, private developers would come in and build private market apartments. And then the second part of the affordability, we can get to, but the first part I wanna clarify-
Yeah, NYCHA controls the sites, and they, nobody can do anything.
Government.
Nobody, it's, yeah, it's not really. So, nothing can happen on a NYCHA campus-
NYCHA is not the government, NYCHA is not, NYCHA is not public housing that's owned and operated by-
It's not exclusively city-owned property in the way that like a de-cas-controlled site is. We can come back to you on all the detail on that, but it's, it's controlled by a public housing authority that is formed under federal law.
I understand that, so far.
The baseline, the baseline thing is-
I'll use government, I'll use government-
Nothing can happen on a NYCHA campus without NYCHA approval. It has so, it has happened that over the last ten years and into the future, when you wanted to build a Batonsis, a hundred percent senior affordable housing up in the Bronx, when you wanna build a hundred percent senior affordable housing on Myrtle, it is a private developer that built those buildings, it is a private developer that operates it, but through, you know, a series of agreements with NYCHA about affordability levels, about, you know, revenues that go back and forth, about affordability into the future, so it's completely papered up. It's just not through the zoning, it's through all the term sheet agreements, it's through the regulatory agreements, it's through things that are recorded against the property, it's just a distinction again between city as regulator and city as property owner, or government as property owner.
So does this proposal make it easier for, in a way that is not the current standard for private developers to build on, in NYCHA developments in the open spaces?
It would, so back to, back to, back to Batonsis and the-
I'm, excuse me? So it's a no?
Here, here, let me, let me see if I can help. It gives NYCHA more opportunity to do with its property as it sees fit, and that might be, and that might be to partner with a private developer to build senior affordable housing, it might be to provide an opportunity to work with a private developer to build a hundred percent regular affordable housing, whatever, whatever, but it gives NYCHA more flexibility, but does not allow anybody to come and do anything on NYCHA property without NYCHA initiating and contracting with them, yeah.
I, you know, the reason why I'm asking the question, like I said, is, this is one analysis that's out there, and for me, it does, for me, it's like whether NYCHA's one to or not, the point is like, does the proposal make this easier for privatization to happen in a way that, no, yes, no?
I would just say no.
I would give like a straight answer.
Okay, okay, I will give you a straight answer, and then I will explain. So I would say no, it does not, but back to my back and forth with Commissioner Benjamin, if you, if NYCHA wants to do a hundred percent affordable development on there, they still have to go through their process with HUD, they still have to go through their process with residents, but zoning will not be an obstacle. That one piece is removed such that they don't need to go through two years of a mayoral zoning override to do what they've been doing, which is a hundred percent affordable, and I think that's a great thing.
Okay. War me down.
Let's go to Commissioner Gold.
Hi, thanks. Couple of questions, a point to follow up, and I guess I'd note that a lot of work certainly has gone into this, and definitely see some changes from the original proposal to now. The first one is, as we look at UAP, which I guess I would agree with what Commissioner Duex said earlier, which that feels like the biggest driving force in getting some more housing in place, have we, have we looked at the economics there to be sure that it really works in most neighborhoods? And the reason I ask is, I mean, when you think about development in New York City, there are, it costs, there are different costs in different places, right? So it might be cheaper economically to develop in Brooklyn than in Manhattan, for instance, or, you know, sort of pick your neighborhood. And so, just curious, I assume some economic work has gone into that, but do we feel that the twenty percent is enough to cover the burden for that developer to sort of, to induce them to do the twenty percent?
Back to the way that I responded to Commissioner Duex, where what's driving participation historically, whether you're talking about our existing voluntary programs, whether you're talking about MIH, or whether you're talking about UAP in the future, we hope, is the availability of that tax incentive for multifamily affordable. The voluntary programs today include a little ostensible market rate housing bump, or whatever. The open secret of New York City housing policy is that that little bump of market rate housing never drove anything. If you had a tax benefit available, you participated in the voluntary inclusionary program. If you did not, like pre-two thousand and fifteen, where some parts of the city, you could develop, you could get the four twenty-one A benefit with no affordable at all, in those neighborhoods, Sunset Park, post rezoning, we didn't see anybody take up the voluntary program. It's always and everywhere been the tax benefit that drives participation, that drives feasibility. And so when I say we're taking the framework that exists today really well, within a limited geography, and expanding that outward, that's what I'm talking about, is, you know, if you wanna develop multifamily rental housing, you need the tax benefit. If you're, if you're taking the tax benefit, you might as well drive down affordability levels and otherwise conform your project to the zoning in order to build a bigger building. And so that is, that's the basic bargain. You're totally correct, different neighborhoods, the economics works differently. I will say that HPD was intimately involved in the financial analysis that undergirded some of the state-level negotiations for forty-five X. They're optimistic, so I'm optimistic. In the lowest value parts of the city, you know, where market rate housing doesn't quite pencil out, you know, we will continue to see primarily subsidized development there, a hundred percent affordable. In some of the higher market areas, we fully expect to see participation in the forty-five X, UAP, you know, the partnership. If you don't provide affordable housing, regardless of where you are, then for the first time ever, you will just simply not be able to max out the development potential on your site. So if, if you don't provide affordable housing, then you're stuck wherever you are today, that maximum amount of market rate housing, you're stuck there. We fully expect that on the vast majority of sites, people will make that bargain, will take the tax benefit, will, you know, max out the development potential on their site and provide permanently affordable housing as part of those projects.
Got it, so this is really geared to be married, if you will, to the forty-five X.
Yes, that's right, we have decades of experience, and so we're taking that framework, and as with so many aspects of this proposal, the geography is what's doing the work, you know? It's a huge city, so if we take that framework, expand it to a hundred percent of medium and high-density districts, we expect an order of magnitude more affordable housing out of it.
Got it, perfect. One or two just small, I'm gonna call, cleanup questions. On backyard requirement, can you just go over a little bit more the setback and who that applies to? Is that only for multifam, or is that across the board?
The rear yard adjustment?
Thirty to twenty.
That is across the board. In lower-density districts, it helps with attached rear yard ADUs or home expansions. We've heard from, you know, neighborhoods around the city who have asked for a little more flexibility. We do have a low-density district that works like that today, to great success, in the areas where R-two-X, where it's, where it's applied. In medium and high-density districts, I'd say it's more geared towards those latent air concerns that we addressed, how unfortunately, requiring a thirty-foot rear yard was part of a range of provisions that forced those bar buildings and actually reduced access to latent air, and so in medium and high-density districts, it has a somewhat different cast, but it is universal basically across the full range of residential densities.
Got it, and then one or two more. On the dwelling unit factor, you know, adjusting or eliminating that, is that specifically for conversion, or is that for new developments as well?
It's for both, yeah.
Got it, and then last, but not least, on landmarks, TDR, there's a comment in there about expanding that to the historic districts as well, and just, you know, wanted to clarify, is that, TDR, is that transferring to the historic district, or is that more encompassing?
Great question. So today, there are a couple categorical exclusions. If you're an individual landmark, you absolutely may not transfer any development rights if you're within a historic district, or if you're within a low-density district, R-one through R-five. We propose to eliminate those categorical exclusions, so if you're an individual landmark within a historic district, this would be available to you. That said, you're in a historic district, so you would have to go to LPC for approval, so there would be additional procedure there to make sure that any resultant development is appropriate within the historic district.
Got it, so we're saying this applies to the individual landmark, but that presumably they could transfer within the district with LPC's permission.
Yeah, with LPC's permission, as long as they got the certificate of appropriateness, that would be possible.
Got it.
Outside of the district too.
Within, yeah, you could go, if you were like on the border of a historic district, individual landmark, you could transfer outside too.
But if it's not anywhere within the district, it is within the boundaries of what you showed up.
Correct, apologies, I was unclear on that. It's the, the transfer radius remains as shown on the slide regardless of whether you're in or outside of a historic district.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Kamani.
Thank you so much, and there may be a question in here, there may just be comments, but, thank you, and thank you to the department so much for the incredible work that you've done on this, and I also wanna thank my fellow Commissioners, Benjamin and Goodrich, for bringing up NYCHA and public housing, which I will continue to do now. I think, you know, a general statement for me is that reimagination really needs to be a core competency of a city, if it's gonna survive and grow, and I see this as a project and a proposal of reimagination, which is what is required, right? And there are gonna be differences of opinion, and how is this gonna play out, but if a city can't reimagine, it's not gonna make it. And a second thing I wanna make sure that folks understand is that NYCHA and public housing in the city needs all options, and it needs everything, and there are so many different narratives and voices out there that feel very strongly, either for or against RAT, or for, and often, as we know, who's left out of those conversations are public housing residents, and what often happens is that all sides are so strong and dug in to their perspective that the actual nuts and bolts of just the facts, ma'am, what is this, and to Commissioner Goodrich, your point, what is this, gets left out, and residents end up with not the information and scared, quite frankly. I'm, not by you, that's not what I'm saying, by all voices out there. And, you know, what is the solution to this? And the solution, which is really hard, or one of the solutions, is true co-governance, and that's a very hard thing to plan, and it's a very hard thing to do, and I think often because it's hard to do, cities don't do it. And there are many cities, not in the United States, a few in the United States, who have really taken on co-governance, and what does that mean? And I think co-governance means much more than a typical kind of experience of resident engagement, which is decisions have been made, here, here's the presentation of, to residents, of here are the decisions, please weigh in, but the decisions have already been made. And I think that, going back to what I said, that NYCHA and public housing needs all solutions, all solutions, is also important to remember that NYCHA is also, and you all know this, is not one single typology of housing. People think that it is, right? People think they know, it's always Towers in the Park. That is just not true. Have we been to Staten Island? That's just not true. There are bungalows in Staten Island. So I think that becomes an important factor, and perhaps even more so, an important factor is that the residents of NYCHA are not a homogenous group of people. Upwards of half a million people. There are going to be deeply uncomfortable conversations, there are different types of resident leaders, there are, just like in any community, and so I think for, and it also, there is no federal fairy, funding fairy, that is going to make the money like appear. And so we really do have to think about what are we gonna do, and it does need to be incrementalism. Incrementalism is still change. No incrementalism is no change. And so I just, I think it's really important to say that the, having the uncomfortable conversations, being willing to stick in those uncomfortable conversations, and I do think NYCHA is making a turn, is what it's gonna take. And if we, if we don't do that, the truth is, is that the physical buildings of public housing are gonna fall down. They're gonna fall apart, and they're gonna end up in the category of obsolescence, which gives HUD the reason it needs to knock them down. So I think that this is an incredibly important proposal, in concert with other things that are happening, and I would- And I would urge just everyone in the universe who must be rapt with attention listening to me, but I'll say it, sing it from the rooftops, is that we must be willing to have these conversations and really strive for a model of co-governance that centers residents so that the information is clear and we have a menu of options to choose from while we are still saying to the federal government, what's up? Now a hundred and seventy billion dollars or whatever it is that we need. So turns out I don't have a question, but that's it.
That's fine. That was a very important set of comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Soria?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for all the work and for addressing all of our questions. I specifically wanted to thank you for sharing the data. The shape belts have been extremely useful. In fact, it was really pleasing to see some of the boards sharing their own spatial analysis. It was really interesting to see how they're processing the information. I have a couple of questions. The first ones are more procedural and then some substantive questions. First, I wanted to ask, in terms of the, I know that the deadline for some of the comments is today, so you're still getting stuff in that we didn't get in our materials. We didn't get any of the Board Presidents' comments. And I think that they're just, they're being submitted as we speak. But I was wondering if you can please share those before Wednesday. It would be really critical for the Commission to be able to review them in preparation for the hearing. I don't know if you've received anything so far.
Sure, we'll send along everything we get. We have told community boards that they, that we'll take anything that we get before the vote and we'll pass that along as quickly as we can. I know some boards don't have their full board votes till a little bit later this month.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you. Yeah, appreciated. If you can share those even when you get them, appreciated. The other question that I have is, so in reading the comments from the boards, it's been really interesting to see sort of like the different perspectives. And again, you know, kudos to what the Chair said at the beginning in terms of the tremendous effort that you've made in terms of trying to reach everyone and explaining and addressing questions everywhere in the city. The responses that I've seen are sort of like mixed. And so I just wanted to understand, for those who have, you know, provided conditional support, that have taken the time to make specific adjustments or recommendations for adjustments, et cetera, can you share a little bit how you plan to process those? And to what extent can people expect that, you know, when they vote yes in support with modifications, et cetera, that's actually sort of like different than just yes?
Do you remember the bar charts from EO on each individual proposal? We will definitely bring back the bar charts so that to the extent possible, we can present information, data from community boards quantitatively in addition to the massive amounts of qualitative feedback that you'll receive. So we will bar chart anything that's bar chartable. And then we will also provide summaries of commentary beyond that that don't lend themselves to that form. But, you know, I think that the department was excited about the way that processing the data, those data in that way informed the modifications that were made at the City Planning Commission and at the City Council. And I would expect that something similar, you know, will happen here.
But just to clarify, or just to confirm my understood, if somebody votes yes with modifications, but those modifications don't make it into the final, what does that mean?
Oh, golly. I mean, we, just because feedback is made doesn't mean that it will automatically be taken. So we definitely are compiling all the feedback in order to inform modifications. You know, we will inform any decisions the City Planning Commission makes around modifications and will also pass that along to City Council as well. But ultimately, it's up to the City Planning Commission and it's up to the City Council on what to do with all that feedback.
Thank you. That answers my question. And the way that I'm processing it is that, you know, the report that we'll vote on will have a summary of those recommendations and then we can decide how we vote accordingly.
Of course.
Okay, perfect. No, thank you. So now, on the substance, I have two questions. The first question builds on Commissioner Gold and Duex's question. And I'm wondering if, you know, what happens in places where there are several FAR incentives that are like overlapping, interacting with each other? In other words, you can, you're eligible for TDR, maybe transit area into development, and you also are available for UAP. It's clear from your response to my colleagues that, you know, applicants who want to go for the state incentive will definitely go for UAP. But given the fact that UAP is really the only affordable housing sort of like incentive that we have in there, have you considered requiring applicants that are gonna request additional FAR for residential to actually commit to creating more affordable housing? In other words, using AIP, a UAP?
That's a great question. So the way I'd characterize it is this. Our zoning programs for affordability, we know how to do them. HPD knows how to do them. DOB knows how to do them. It's like a pretty fast pipeline now. Developers know how to use them. It's just a framework that, again, has been in place for a long time. And so it's totally this as-of-right thing that everybody knows how to use. When it comes to more specialized mechanisms like a landmark TDR, you gotta negotiate with the counterparty, you gotta go to LPC, do your continuing maintenance plan, everything like that. It's a little, you know, it's a process. It's a little more uncertain. And that goes even more so for something like a transit accessibility bonus. Everyone is different. You gotta go back and forth with MTA. You know, that's typically something that gets used only in fairly specialized circumstances in, you know, higher value areas. So we fully expect that the user friendliness of 485X, in addition to the fact that it's the only thing that gets a tax benefit, will overwhelmingly drive people towards UAP as a way to achieve that FAR. That said, you can stack one of those bonuses on top. So you could do UAP and stack one twenty percent bonus, whether it's, you know, the transit accessibility bonus on top of that, or you could do UAP plus landmark transfer on top of that. And that would be great. If an individual development is supporting both affordable housing and landmark preservation, or affordable housing and transit accessibility, I'm all for that. And so we are enabling that through the zoning as well. But we absolutely do not expect a developer to like look at the options and be like, I'm gonna go with transit accessibility over UAP or landmark TDR over UAP just because by its nature, it's just a more involved process.
But have you done an analysis of which one could be more expensive? So I'm assuming that, you know, a developer is gonna go with like a pro forma that tells them, you know, what's the best route of action? And so I'm just worried that UAP may be expensive. And so, you know, that's my question, you know, at the beginning when we certified this was, how many affordable units do we think we can create? And, you know, you responded to that line of inquiry earlier, so we don't have to go about that. But I think in this case, because this, we really need it. I mean, you heard from our other commissioners how the way that we're processing this is that this is just critical to happen. UAP shouldn't, sort of like, there shouldn't be a question. And so I'm wondering if you can take a closer look and see whether there's any opportunities within the zoning to actually require it. Require it, it's used. If somebody's gonna apply for an incentive, we know that we can't require UAP per se, but.
Yeah, I mean, the financial analysis, that was part and parcel of HPD's analysis that undergirded the 485X. You know, of those things, TDR, transit accessibility bonus, other bonuses or affordable housing, only affordable housing has the support of that tax incentive. And so if you're looking at the raw finances, if you're looking at your development pro forma, we overwhelmingly expect developers to choose the affordable housing.
But is that something you've looked at? Can you share any of that analysis?
I can talk to HPD and we'll figure out a way to respond to that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have another quick question in this regard, which has to do with where UAP and in fact, some of the other City of Yes incentives overlap, let's say with, I'm particularly interested in the zoning for coastal resilience, coastal flood resilience benefits, where, you know, you would get a twenty percent bonus as long as you, you know, accelerate the outpatient measurement. And so I'm wondering if you've anticipated places where the City of Housing may overlap where these other places and whether or not these incentives could stack, which in general, I think, sounds maybe sort of like a scenario where this is beneficial. But I'm concerned that we may unintendedly increase residential density in places that are vulnerable to flooding specifically.
With coastal flood, it'd be curious to understand what you're talking about because coastal flood resiliency allows a little bit more height, basically to comply with the building code. What bonus are you trying, are you?
Yeah, so I'm referring to the twenty percent increase for sellers that you can use in places where you're actually committing to the higher standard.
Where you comply with, the whole point there is that.
In addition to height, to your point, in addition to the height where you can actually get additional FAR.
You can't use your seller space and so it tries to just keep you whole. So that's really, it's going to be predominantly used for smaller sort of residential buildings that would have, that would have access to that. But it's mainly, that's just keeping, that was in the floodplain, keeping people whole to the FAR they had. It wasn't really a bonus.
Maybe I'm sort of like misreading this and I'm happy to stupid the text that I've been analyzing for this because I, that's something that I'm concerned.
Okay.
It sounds like they could stack and perhaps you've already identified places where this could happen and they won't. But I want to understand.
I would think of it differently, which is like they're not bonuses. They're keeping people's FAR the same that they previously were in the floodplain. That's sort of a separate thing and then UAP is a just separate thing entirely. I can talk to you after this or at some other point and just try to work through it.
Yes, I would like that because I'm looking at the, at the project description for what that zoning amendment was. And I'm reading the increase here. Anyway, going back to this, thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask you one last question. So in your, in the example, in the presentation, when we looked at the averaged income, the example that you showed went up to ninety percent. But I'm assuming this is just an example. My question really is whether, how high can that go?
Gotcha.
Can it go, my reading, my, is that it just could go up to one hundred AMI, which would be higher than the cap established by voluntary inclusionary housing? And in that regard, like we are, yes, averaging it to sixty, but we may be allowing a hundred percent AMI under the affordable housing threshold. And I'm wondering if you can clarify whether that's correct.
Right. So UAP, the requirements there are an average of sixty percent AMI with an absolute ceiling of a hundred percent. If you wanted to get from sixty to a hundred, say, just to simplify a little bit, you'd have to balance that out with a twenty percent unit on the other end. And so that's kind of the magic of weighted averaging. A hundred percent has only, that ceiling has come up only a couple times in community board meetings, at least as far as I'm aware. And it's always been in some Manhattan community boards that say, what about people at higher incomes, they need affordable housing too? Can you remove that cap? So yes, there is a ceiling, there's a cap, a hundred percent. We don't expect that most projects will reach that just because it's hard to hit affordability at the twenty percent range in order to balance that out. But for the first time, there's a limit on there too.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing I would say, I mean, I, building on what Commissioner Benjamin said, I am also very appreciative of the space to discuss more specific questions and I look forward to that. As you know, I have some additional questions on the DIS that relates to vacancy rates, race equity, risk for displacement, et cetera. But I'll wait for that. I just wanted to use my last minute to comment on the previous conversation on infill, contextual infill. I think that while, of course, NYCHA is at the center of this conversation, I think that we need to analyze this in terms of all public land. Because while NYCHA has very specific safeguards or processes for residents to weigh in and engage, that wouldn't necessarily happen if the redevelopment takes place, let's say, in a public school or in public land that was a former school or hospital, for that matter. And so I would encourage you to take a closer look at how that applies in public land inside or beyond NYCHA for those reasons. I don't share the belief that a zoning tax amendment is the right way to do this. I believe that as we have in NYCHA, these are controversial, very specific situations where you need to be able to, for example, see the actual specific impact on, of what these proposals are gonna have so residents can understand them and engage. I know that in terms of NYCHA, as you've explained, this will happen later. But we're making decisions, changes in zoning that will affect them. And they don't know that yet. And so I just wanted to make a comment on that and, and again, sort of like suggest maybe like a closer look at how this affects public land in general just beyond NYCHA.
Yeah, I mean, I agree completely. I am wary of the NYCHA aspect of this conversation taking up all the oxygen when, you know, we have a broader range of public sites, as you mentioned. We have a broader range of privately owned sites too. Just this morning, meeting with dozens of faith-based organizations, you know, the mayor has a task force on this as well. We have congregations around the city who are land-rich and money poor, who are looking to use their properties for things like infill, affordable housing on their campuses. That we're zoning, the same bad zoning that creates problems for NYCHA creates problems for them as well. And so want to make sure that we're talking about the full range of sites, including less controversial, you know, property owners who want to do good things in order to preserve institutions that are very important to the city and to neighborhoods. So there's that. There's that as well. And I was gonna say something else, but it's escaping me. If I remember, I'll come back to it on the.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate your response. And Frank, just to clarify, going back to the earlier point for a second, just so you know what I'm talking about. I'm referring to the allowance for up to twenty percent floor area bonus in R2X, R3, R4, R4A and R401 for attic allowance. I think I said seller, so that's, it was, I just wanted to clarify that.
So those are all low-density districts, definitely not places where UAP has applicability. So that's sort of, maybe it's worth just going through that a little to try to figure out what interactions, if any, there are. We'll figure it out. And I did remember what I was, wanted to remind folks of the broader conversation around, around some of our infill proposals for irregular sites, obstructed sites, zoning lots of existing buildings. However, the impetus here really is to remove the zoning that forces people to do tall, skinny buildings, you know? Some of the images on the slide Veronica showed, Two Hundred Amsterdam or Clermont Hall or the building in Astoria that led to the contextual rezoning in Astoria, you know, a few years back. There's an R6 building in Cheapshead Bay on a big irregular site where, you know, zoning forced them to do, I don't know how tall that building is, but it's bigger than anything for like miles and miles around. People don't like it. They, you know, they want to yell at the developer for it. I have to say, it's our fault. It was our fault. It's a huge irregularly, it looks like a pork chop, like a regularly shaped shop, site with like a little bit of street frontage. And that was, that was the option that zoning gave them in that R6 district. And so we want to be careful as we have this conversation about how to just like make this proposal the best that it can be, that we don't inadvertently revert to stuff that everybody agrees is, you know, suboptimal to say the least.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. And I will just add that if anything does come in between today and the hearing, Borough President, Community Board, otherwise, we will share it with the Commission. I'm gonna go to a second round for Commissioner Benjamin. And, oh, Commissioner Suriel, you have questions? Okay, go ahead. And then we'll go to Commissioner Benjamin.
First of all, I just want to acknowledge this presentation and the conversation here. It's been incredible and all the questions that have been asked have really been very, very helpful. So here's something I'm just thinking about. I'm not really sure if it would ever happen or how relevant the concern that I'm thinking about or the question I'm thinking about is, but I'm gonna pose it. With, in the situation where, and Commissioner Gold, in his questioning, hit on something I was wondering, and that had to do with how UAP could apply to conversions as well. You know, a rebuild, an add-on, we'll call it. Is that possible or is it all about new development only?
So I'll answer that question in two parts, I guess. First off, one of the things that we really want to highlight about the state level legislation that passed this year is for the first time ever, we have a tax benefit for affordability and conversions as well. We've never had that before. And what that means is that typically conversions are just a hundred percent. And what that means is that typically conversions are just a hundred percent market rate. Chair Geronick also chaired the Office Conversion Task Force sponsored by City Council, geez, two years ago now. And, you know, feasibility for conversions is a dicey proposition. It found that when you, if you require affordability there, you know, feasibility goes to zero. And so that's why we advocated very strongly for the state-level tax benefit that means we'll get twenty-five percent affordable out of a majority of conversions going forward, we believe.
So let me, let me, I appreciate that and, and I, I get it. I, I'm not using the correct term. Is it possible, aside from new development from the ground up? Or a complete demolition and new development from the ground up? If a building owner, again, this is what I mean about the relevance, I'm just, I'm creating a scenario and not sure if it actually applies. If UAP permits a twenty percent increase, could a developer take an existing building and build twenty percent more on it?
I mean, it depends. Conversions are basically exempt from whatever FAR framework you have in a, in a district as it exists.
So you're calling this a conversion too? I use the word conversion, but I don't mean office to residential. I mean redevelopment.
You mean enlargements?
An enlargement.
Oh, yeah, I mean enlargements are subject to the, to the FAR frameworks. So if you were in an R8A district or whatever where your market rate cap is six and your UAP cap is seven point two and you have an existing building that's six FAR or whatever and they want to enlarge, well, the only way they can enlarge is if they're providing a hundred percent affordable housing and sixty percent AMI pursuant to UAP.
In, in that new piece or somewhere, maybe reorganizing the whole building, but accomplishing, reaching that threshold.
So, yeah, new development, subject to FAR frameworks, enlargements, subject to FAR frameworks.
Yep.
Conversions, however, you know, do you have an existing building already? It's as big as it is and you can convert that from non-residential to residential regardless of what the residential FAR limits are.
So, so the, where I was headed with this, now that I understand that it would, it potentially could apply to an enlargement scenario. What does the impact of the previously approved building? I'm not talking about a hundred-year-old building. I'm talking about, let's say, a building was developed twenty years ago under, with this commission and the city council's approval. In the process of land use, there was a negotiation that the development first came with thirty stories as, as its, uh, application and through the land use process and public review, it was reduced, I'm not using FAR numbers, I'm just talking, was reduced to twenty-two stories. And now that developer, twenty years later, says, you know, I can get twenty percent on this, but there was a previous approval that, and I'm saying limited the height. I don't know if it was a restrictive declaration that limited the height. I don't know if it was a negotiation in the council where the developers said, I give up. Okay, I'll build twenty-two stories and not thirty. How does that play together?
Gotcha.
And the reason, I raised this in a, in a balanced way because neighborhoods are, and I don't, and I, I say rightly in a way, overly protective of their built environment. And the process to build neighborhoods was, in most cases, a public one. And it isn't just a low-density issue and concern about changing the character of the neighborhood or what people relied upon from existing zoning or existing agreements and negotiations, but this applies even in high-density neighborhoods. And so it's really, I'm trying to be balanced in this to think it's not just about, oh, knocking down a one-family home and building four. This is also about taking a building that's in a neighborhood that was perhaps negotiated and the communities had to deal with that, whether they were happy or not. And now can a complete change of the size of that building occur because of this in a way it wasn't permitted to in the first round?
I mean, it sounds like you're talking about like a site-specific approval with a site plan, so like a large scale.
Whatever fits in my story, whichever example it is.
If you have a large scale with an existing site plan and you want to add a new building, you want to change a building in that, in the way that you, you laid out, you, you'd have to come back to the commission, to the department for an assessment of what type of additional process is required. You know, you're familiar with non-ULER modifications.
Of course.
You know, so sometimes it's a non-ULER modification. If they sought to increase the extent of any waiver, then they'd probably be in a situation where they would need a new special permit. So it depends, but the, the point is if they have a site-specific approval with a, with a site plan, no, they have to come back in order to modify that to do a new thing on that site plan.
Understood. So in what scenario do they not have to come back? Is there a scenario where they do not have to come back and can, and they can take advantage of a provision like that? I won't ask the one where they have to come back. Is there one that perhaps they don't have to come back from?
If there's a site plan, there's no way to do a new building, there's no way to do an enlargement without coming-
Can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
Let's take this example. Six is your as-of-right FAR. It went to the city council, the city council negotiated it down on a single site, no site plan. It's just a vanilla, whatever, whatever gets you the, that's six. And then it's in there, there's a community benefit agreement, there's a, and they, they said, we're, the developer says, okay, we're, we're proceeding at five FAR. The building is built at five FAR. And it's, and it's memorialized through community benefit agreements or restrictive declaration. I, you know, there may be different answers in different, in different scenarios here, but let's just take Commissioner Surlo's example. Now that district, the district where that building is located could be entitled to seven point two with six to seven point two allowable only for affordable housing, but they're down at five. This, I believe, is the question that Commissioner Surlo is trying to get at.
All right, so I mean, since basically-
Not as articulately as, you've posed it, but I'm doing my best here.
Since the, basically since the last charter, the major charter revision, major charter revision in nineteen eighty-nine, you know, when the Board of Estiment was replaced with-
Oh, I remember sadly.
You remember. So basically since that time, uh, the City Planning Commission has not, or, you know, the Board of Estiment used to, City Planning Commission does not impose any kind of restrictive declaration in conjunction with straight rezonings. So if there is a declaration, if there's a CBA, somebody might be a signatory to it, but it's not City Planning Commission. So it's up to whoever the signatory to that CBA is to enforce it, but it's outside the land use process. It might be the community board signed it, it might be the city council signed it or whatever. But when it comes to requirements like that attached to straight rezonings, we're not allowed to touch it and it's up to whoever signed it in order to enforce it.
I, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out if it's possible that thi- this particular provision of getting twenty percent more, even with all the AMIs and, and all of that, could happen in a building or on a building that has, that had an approval that limited the height at another time in its life?
I mean, when you're talking about enlarging an existing building, occupied building and the incentive is not, you know, tantalizing market rate floor area but is permanently affordable floor area at sixty percent. And you're talking about the legal risk involved if somebody forced you to sign a CBA or a restrictive declaration back in, you know, nineteen ninety-four or whatever. I mean, if you know of any site, we're happy to talk about it, but that just strikes me as like very-
I, I don't know of any site.
Yeah, it just strikes me as like outlandish that that would happen.
I'm just trying to figure out if, because-
I use the term advisedly, but I just, I think that that scenario is, I just can't envision it.
Well, and I started by saying, I'm not even sure a scenario like this could exist because I could imagine that it doesn't. But I was processing this and wondering, since it is providing an additional floor area to a building that would surpass the zoning floor area, the underlying zoning floor area. And we have situations that we see all the time where what is permissible by zoning is negotiated down for a variety of reasons by, not by us necessarily, although maybe I could remember one or two where that happened here. But that, it's more obviously happens at the council. I just wondered if it was possible, but I have no particular project or location in mind. I'm thinking process-oriented.
Yeah, site plan, you got to come back. No site plan, you may have to deal with some CBA signed by somebody else, not us. But because, you know, UAP, it really only increases floor area for a hundred percent affordable housing at sixty percent AMI. It's not something that's going to induce a bunch of, you know, we've heard this from some folks who are like, it's going to, you're going to bulldoze the whole neighborhood and, and build a little bit bigger because you're enabling, you know, additional twenty percent of affordable housing. That would not comport with anything we've seen in history or anything that emerges from a financial feasibility analysis.
Understood.
Great.
And the, the only additional point that I would make there, and I appreciate the question, is that if we were concerned about a developer going back on agreement that they'd made with the council on a CBA or restrictive declaration or whatever, we should or would be equally concerned about their going from five to six in the FAR example that I gave, as we would be for them going to the, the rather implausible six to seven point two for all affordable.
Yeah.
Because that is the same, it's the same level of risk. It would be a, a developer or their successor saying, yeah, I have an agreement, but I'm just going to, I'm going to disregard it regardless. That, to me, feels like it's the same, it's the same question.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that too. I, I don't see, I see it, going from five to six is just a violation of the agreement. We're providing an option for a developer to take advantage of additional FAR. So I see that just a little differently, but there are also approvals we've made for developments that have not yet been built. And so what happens, it's not like, oh, they're going to build twenty percent more on the roof of the building. We have approved, and the council has approved, developments around the city not, without a shovel in the ground yet. And would, could a developer take advantage of this in an unbuilt, yet approved, previously approved development plan? That's, that's where, because there's a lot of pending developments with approvals out there that we have not seen one unit of housing or, or construction done. So that's where my head is going.
Absolutely. I mean, if, if you haven't put a shovel in the ground, these are changes to the underlying zoning that we think are significant improvement over the zoning that exists today.
Yeah.
So to the extent that people are pumping the brakes to see what emerges from this and will maybe decide to build that extra affordable housing or maybe decide to convert using the state-level tax benefit, so that, we, we are all for that. We're all for that. I mean, that's, we like the proposals and that's why we're proposing.
And I, I understand that from, from the department's perspective. And my question, isn't it all a judgment on what's right or wrong? It was what's possible and what's not possible so that we're aware of the implications, which I think are important to note. Because it could, it could undo, despite the good result in terms of increasing housing, there was a process that everyone went through at one time. And again, maybe it's always the right thing to do. That's not what I was asking about. I was just trying to understand what the possibilities were.
I mean, that's the core of the public review here is those types of discussions around that, like whether these changes to the underlying are appropriate or not.
Yes.
Any concerns that what it would newly allow, you know, that's what we're talking about.
And I, I appreciate this dialogue and all of this. It's very helpful and positive.
Just one thing on what the effect would be on applications currently under review. Since earlier, about the same time as referral, starting in March or April, environmental reviews did include a supplemental tech memo appendix to applications under your review that provided an assessment of what CHO would mean for applications, kind of running concurrently through the public review process. So taking a hard look at, under CHO, if approved, how would these rezoning applications or site-specific approvals be changed? And is that something that the commission can take into consideration in determining whether those land use actions are, are appropriate or not?
Okay, that's great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we're going to, we're going to round out with Commissioner Benjamin and Commissioner Surlo. I'm sorry, Commissioner Astorio. We just, we just heard from Commissioner Surlo and we, if, if that's how it's going for me today, Wednesday is going to, Commissioner Benjamin.
Two, two more questions and you don't have to answer them now, but we can answer them. The first one is referring to Commissioner Astorio's question about stacking the benefits and at some level to Commissioner Surlo's. Is it possible within the zoning to express a preference for the stacking? Like you can't use X benefit until you've used Y benefit?
Uh, we don't do that today largely for, in the zoning, largely for the reasons that I mentioned. It's just the as-of-right nature, the established pipeline, the fact that people know it and understand how to use it just makes UAP far and away the easiest way to do it. So I see that as a preference in the zoning today, but there's no official-
But it may be the most expensive preference.
Well, it's the only one you get money to do.
What?
It's the only one that somebody, you know, gives you a tax benefit to do, so.
But it also costs more money than potentially a TDR from a, a building that's in good shape. So while we haven't done it in the recent past, I was wondering if you could give it some consideration so that there would be more of an onus to in fact choose the UAB despite the back, the fact that financing institutions and others might steer you towards a cheaper method of achieving two FAR.
Noted, you know.
And that includes other potential transfers like an open space or arcade or any of those other ways you can get additional FAR. And the second one is, is the department currently considering any modifications to the text as proposed?
I mean, yeah, I will, I will jump in and say, let's have our hearing here and then let's talk about what the commission sees as valuable changes and we will work on thinking about what that should be.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Astorio?
Thank you, thank you Chair. So I'm, I'll, I'll park, I'll set aside the questions regarding the overlap of low-density and citywide incentives with, or in exchange for, or, and, and the bonuses that could be received in exchange for coastal resilient standards. And we'll, we'll discuss that with Frank separately, but I had a couple of very specific questions that I still wanted to ask. One is, well, the, the, in reading the, a, a, climate change emission, in carbon emissions chapter in the DIS, you know, I noticed that, of course, there's a lot of limitations associated with the nature of the citywide tax amendment, but as you may sort of like anticipate, that makes me a little anxious. Because on the other hand, we ju, we follow the carbon neutrality zoning tax amendment and this zoning tax amendment is, is completely disconnected from the first one. And so when, when we were analyzing the opportunities associated with carbon neutrality, we, we talked about whether quality housing could be a space within zoning where we could, if not encourage, actually require some of the, eh, eh, energy standards that were discussed back then. And so I, I haven't found anything. I just wanted to ask if, if there's anything that I've missed that perhaps is leading into that direction or if they're really kind of like at this point disconnected.
You mentioned the greenhouse gas chapter. Are you talking about the zoning or the environmental review?
I, I spoke about both. I, I made a comment about the DIS, which we can set aside. The, the question is really, is there anything in the, a housing opportunity that is building on what we've accomplished with carbon neutrality in terms of achieving energy standard?
It would be good for housing being built under this proposal to use and needed the rules that were, that were just approved under carbon.
But why, why would people do it? Is that what I'm trying to?
Because they have Local Law Ninety-seven to comply with.
No, I know, I know already, but how is economic opportunity building on carbon neutrality? Are there any incentives for people to build cleaner buildings according to? Are there any incentives for people to build cleaner buildings according to, and the housing?
In zoning, no, but that was true in carbon neutrality also, right? The whole point of carbon neutrality was, what are the things in the zoning resolution that are making it hard for people to comply with all of the other city and state laws that are out there to try to decarbonize the city's buildings, right? Like that was the core of it. So that, that was what it tried to accomplish and get, get it all passed. And so now with that, now we're talking about the situation where like if someone's trying to build a new house, dwelling in or a new house, maybe this will allow to do this without having to have a parking spot. Maybe it'll allow them to do this with doing an apartment building right near a subway. So, I mean, it, it, it sort of builds on the same concepts, but they really were two separate things. It's not adding incentives to try to like make solar panels more, more possible on a building or anything like that.
But why not? I mean, that's what I'm asking, I'm, I'm pointing that as a missed opportunity, just to finish the idea, just, just because, you know, when carbon neutrality, one of the best things about carbon neutrality, we said that here is that you created an ultra-low energy category, a standard for low-density housing that would be recognized and acknowledged and where people would be, eh, well, there was a clear incentive to do that.
And, and it's still there.
But let me finish, let me finish. I'll, I'll, I'll finish very quickly. My question is really, and I think you've already answered it, housing opportunity doesn't incentivize clean buildings at all. It just incentivizes creation of housing. Nothing right now built on previous.
I would say that all of the other rules that the city and state have in effect that affect new construction really work to make new housing much more energy efficient than housing 10, 20, 50, or 100 years ago, right? Like, I, I think you agree with that.
Yeah.
And so like a new house, you know, the zoning doesn't have to do everything. This is one of the truths things that over time we've all had to realize because the zoning is really hard and slow to change. And so there are, you know, to keep zoning up to date with the technologies and, and just the general framework of climate change is like extremely difficult, and one of the, one of the main reasons why we have always tried to keep the zoning out of this, because like other laws more nimble, right? Other, the building code is changed all the time to deal with these things, and in fact are better places for that kind of level of specificity. Where zoning size, the shape of building, maybe what uses are in it, that's sort of about its skill set. And, and I think that's something that like we, we didn't try to change as part of this proposal.
Fair enough. That answers my question. I mean, I don't think that you have to do it, but you can. I, I, I just, let's, let's.
Okay, I think, I think we can.
But I, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Eh, so the, I think, apologies if I missed this, but can you explain why R5 was left out of UAP? What was the rationale?
Um, I can start, John, if you want to say this, but generally the inclusionary housing program starts at R6 and above, and UAP, which really sort of models from inclusionary, also started from R6 and above. So the lower density world of R1 through R5, there are allowances for affordable senior housing as a type, but generally anything more specific than that has always been, the cutoff has been R6.
I see, so it's more of a historical?
I would, yeah, building on what Frank said, I'd also say that once you get down to R5, and especially below that there, UAP is not something that really works on sites of typical size. So if you're in an R5 district and you have a typical 2,500 square foot lot, that's 5,000 square feet of floor area, that's maybe five or six units. If you limit floor area on, in R5s based on UAP, then we run the risk of just re-imposing some of the obstacles to development in R5 that we're removing through other parts of, of housing opportunity. So when we're creating these programs, back to, my back and forth with Commissioner Benjamin, again, we are really keeping an eye on how it would work on sites of typical size in those districts. And for a typical sized site in R5, UAP doesn't, doesn't really work. And so in addition to what Frank said about building on existing inclusionary programs that are, have always been R6 to R10, there's this additional analysis of what would and wouldn't be feasible on the, on those sites. So I would add that to that.
Thank you. That answers my question.
And then for the climate stuff, I mean, I just do want to keep our eye on the, on the ball, the big picture here, too. 100,000 additional units in New York City is 100,000 units that don't have to be built in the, in the suburbs, that don't have to be built in more auto-dependent parts of the country. People don't disappear, you know? You got to build housing for them somewhere. If you're, if you're not building housing for them in the city on a subway, you're, you're building them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, thank you, John. We're gonna, we're gonna close with, with Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah, I could say that, especially related to, uh, how it's, oriented, what new models are supposed to allow. I'm just wondering, what kind of data did you have or do you have that, that leads you to believe that those would be attractive models for developers?
Well, you know, qualitatively speaking, I would, I think back to the 100-plus meetings that we've had with stakeholders over the last year, which do include some folks who, you know, control sites like that, who were, you know, very excited at the possibility of being able to build again that iconic building form, two, three stories of residential above a commercial ground floor. As it is today, the zoning basically limits you to having taxpayers on those sites. You know, some people want to do more than pay their taxes. They want to, you know, actually do something more productive and more remunerative for those sites, and so this would give them the opportunity in a way that we also would reinforce neighborhood character rather than detract from it.
No, I understand advocates.
No, I mean, property owners.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, given the cost of land, cost of material, at the end of the day, are these really, do the numbers really work on these, would the numbers work on, on these kinds of?
I would say that, I don't, I don't have any evidence for this at all, but.
And I know this is not a big solution in terms of, you know, the overall scope of things, but I'm just wondering, you know, anecdotally, would they, would they really pencil out?
A lot of these sites are, like I said, I don't have, I can't produce the data, but a lot of these sites are, were bought by Joe Schlo's grandpa back in like 1940. They have zero basis in the land, you know?
They've been in your family for 80 years, you know, that's, uh.
And so that type of low basis site, if, this would provide the opportunity to do something with it that doesn't realistically exist today. And as with any one of these proposals, you make broad-based incremental changes, and some portion of sites are going to be able to take advantage of it, some other portion of sites are not, but that's the nature of zoning.
Yeah, I, I, I think, long-term ownership is, 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 could be feasible. I'm, I'm just, but I think, you know, speculative development would be another. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, with that, John, let me thank you and your team for all of your attention and all of the, the tremendous work over many months, and we know that we're gonna hear just a, a couple of minutes on Wednesday just to reintroduce the topic, but so this is really the, the right time for us to say thank you to all of you for your thoughtful answers, for your deep, deep engagement with us, and also, of course, with the, the community boards and community members and advocates and everybody else. So we appreciate all of you and for all of your efforts, so thank you. Let me turn to you, Sarah, and see what else we have to do today.
Okay, future votes for consideration on Wednesday, July 10th. Staff have prepared reports for 712 Myrtle Avenue. Also, a report on Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Easement Acquisition. We are joined by Brenna on Zoom, who is going to present a slide.
Hello.
Hi. So I am here to present, Sarah, am I going to see the slide now or?
Give it one second.
Yep. One second, we'll pull up the slide for Tibbetts Brook.
Perfect, okay, so, hi, everyone. Sarah very nicely said, my name is Brenna Hemmings, and I'm here to give a staff recommendation for Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Easement Acquisition. New York City Department of Environmental Protection and New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services are requesting an acquisition of real property by the city to establish a permanent easement for the construction and maintenance of a closed conduit pipeline within five MTA-owned properties within, between West 230th Street and the Harlem River and the Bronx. The easement would provide access for DEB to construct and periodically maintain the pipeline. The pipeline is a vital component of the Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Project. Department of City, Department of City Planning staff supports the project because it would facilitate the creation of recreational and open space opportunities for the nearby communities, and it would also reduce the frequency and volume of combined sewer overflow events. And with that, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions? Questions, questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. We don't, we don't have any questions for you today, so thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, bye.
All right, next, staff have prepared reports on both Princess Point Development and Princess Point Vesting Amendment. On the private application, there was a memo in your materials, and Kari is here to present a slide on each.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hi, my name is Kari Bailey, and I'm just gonna give a follow-up from the post-hearing on Princess Point Development. Next slide, please. So the Princess Point Development is a private application by PBML LLC, and they're requesting three actions. One, a change to the city map to map for new public streets. Secondly, a South Richmond, special South Richmond Development District authorization per zoning resolution 10764 for alteration of boundaries of a prior subdivision approval. And lastly, a legal document action to amend an existing restrictive declaration. And that would facilitate the development of 94 new single-family residents, which 14 are already existing, and the total would be 108 single-family residents. But along with that, it would include four new public streets, public open space, and waterfront access. The department is recommending approval of this application as it meets the applicable findings and the street mapping is appropriate. Next slide, please. Additionally, the department recommends the approval of the Department of City Planning zoning text amendment that is being considered in conjunction with the private application in order to reinstate vesting language for pre-LDGMA developments that were inadvertently removed as part of last year's special, the South Richmond zoning relief. And following the CPC hearing on June 12th, the applicant had provided written responses to a few questions asked by the commission, which was sent out in the latest CPC memo that Sarah already had mentioned. But we're happy to answer any follow-up questions if there are any. Thank you.
Questions? Questions, questions? Okay, thanks very much. We, we do not have questions for you today, so thank you, Kari, for all of your work.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, for Wednesday's votes, staff have prepared a report for the Hecksheer Building Landmark Designation. No questions? Okay, post-hearing follow-ups. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have 3117 12th Street rezoning, which had a public hearing at the June 26 public meeting. We are joined by Derek on Zoom.
Hello, good afternoon, Commission. As an update to my pre-hearing presentation on July 27th, 2024, the Queensborough President held a hearing on this application and submitted a recommendation of approval. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate the development of a new five-story building containing residential uses. The establishment of an R6B zoning district would appropriately increase housing density while maintaining the established residential character of the area, and the designation of mandatory inclusionary housing is in line with the city's goals to increase permanently income restricted housing near transit. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have 150 Mill Street rezoning, which had a public hearing at the June 26 public meeting. There was a testimony on this item in your materials, and David is here to present a slide on Zoom.
This is a post-hearing review for 150 Mill Street rezoning application for which a public hearing was held on June 26th. This is a zoning map amendment from an M11 district to an M15 district to facilitate the construction of a 10-story approximately 64,000 square foot development. Most development will include retail use, propose a supermarket at the ground floor and cellar, ambulatory diagnostic uses at the second and third floors, and office uses above. No parking is proposed, as none is required. I would like to briefly note that since the application was certified, the applicant has informed DCP that they do plan to include light manufacturing within the proposed development. The department supports this application. The existing M11 district limits commercial and industrial uses to 1.0 FAR and has high parking requirements and presents very limited options for productive development at this location, whereas the proposed 1M15 district allows a mix of uses at a more appropriate FAR for this area. The M15 district allows for greater FAR, supporting a higher density of jobs and improved design flexibility permitted by the M15 envelope, and is consistent with and supported by the surrounding uses, which include the NYCHA Red Hook Houses, a daycare, mixed residential and commercial buildings, and other community facility uses. Flexibility of the M15 envelope is appropriate, given the location of the site adjacent to the elevated Kiwanis Expressway. As such, the department recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
Thanks. Stay with us one sec. Commissioner Sorio has a question.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for, for the update, and thanks so much for the, the testimony. This is, this is really useful, as this was quoted by the Borough President. I, I wanted to know if, since this is dated April 17th, and the conversation has evolved quite a lot, as we heard directly from the applicant, did you, have you received anything else? Or I know that the, specifically SBIDC did not testify, but they haven't submitted anything pri, like after this April 17th letter, right? Or can the department reach out and understand, you know, how, what has happened from the perspective of the South Brooklyn Industrial Development Corporation? They're, they're very clear in their, in their testimony regarding their skepticism.
Yeah, understood. We've spoken to SBIDC very, very briefly. I don't want to mis, they haven't, to, I guess, answer the higher level question, they have not submitted any additional, like, actual written testimony or anything like that since the letter that you've received. And so I don't want to necessarily, you know, speak their words for them. I will say that we have had a few conversations with SBIDC, brief conversations, and, you know, they're still paying attention to the property and looking at opportunities that they may have to try to incorporate industrial space, but that's really all I can say without, you know, putting words in their mouths.
Gotcha, fair enough. I, I appreciate the, the work to help us understand how they're feeling about it. The, the other quick question is, I know that, you know, you mentioned the decision to incorporate industrial or manufacturing, light manufacturing was sort of like a, a last-minute thing before the hearing and so forth. I'm assuming we haven't received anything from the applicant in more detail to help us understand and fully address some of the questions that came up in terms of how that would work. But if, if you can follow up and, and maybe sort of like facilitate that conversation, I would appreciate it, because I would like to understand the implications of the change in the proposal.
Right, understood, yes. We're happy to speak to the applicant more about that. We have been pretty adamant that, you know, we need information about that. We haven't received a staff level, any information that wasn't presented kind of at the public hearing a few weeks ago, but I'll be sure to relay some of the details to the applicant today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Next, we have 250 86th Street rezoning, which had a public hearing at the June 26 public meeting. There was a memo in your materials, and Josh is here to present a slide on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Gronnik and Commissioners. I'm going in for Kyra Quavis McCarthy, the lead planner for this application. So I'm pleased to share that our department supports this application, which would bring the applicant's future medical office into compliance. We believe the zoning map amendment from R32 to R6B and the zoning text amendment for MIH is appropriate to ensure the continued use and community facility uses within Bay Ridge. These two actions would also bring seven non-applicant owned lots into compliance, thus providing flexibility for current and future homeowners. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Josh. Okay, lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups on MSK Pavilion, which had a public hearing at the June hearing at the June 26 Public Meeting, there was testimony in your materials on this item. There will be a presentation at the next review session, but if there's any questions today, please let us know.
Not at the moment, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and Sarah has indicated to me, using non-verbal cues, that we are done for the day. So I will thank you all for your time and attention. Wednesday is our hearing for citywide special housing opportunity. We'll look forward to seeing you all then. Commissioner Benjamin?
One quick question. If you could make sure that before the Commissioners arrive, the air conditioning is turned off?
Yes, yes. Yes, we will. Actually, and would you say two minutes, five minutes, do you think?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I understand. We take the points. We'll make sure that we get it nice and cool for Wednesday, and, yes, our apologies. You got it. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned. See you all Wednesday.
The time is 4:28 PM.